Our city council meeting, we call to order, we're gonna do roll call. After we do roll call, we have the invocation led by Rabbi David Lisbon of the Jewish Community Center. Then we have the pledge of allegiance led by our very own council member, Nicole. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Councilmember Jeru.
Here.
Councilmember Nicole.
Here.
Councilmember Persak.
Here.
Mayor Pratim Pimentel.
Here.
And Mayor Boyle.
Here.
All right.
Okay, if we could all please rise and then we'll have Rabbi Lisbon lead us in the invocation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, town officials, and good evening to all. I'm honored and humbled to stand in the presence of such distinguished individuals who devote their lives to better the lives of others. We thank God today that our beloved country, the United States of America, our beloved state, state of California, and our beloved city, the city of El Segundo, is blessed with such legislators, beacons of unwavering strength, belief, and leadership. We know that the strength to do what you do is born out of profound faith, hope, prayer, and trust in God Almighty. I thank you for continuing to inspire the city of El Segundo. Entire world looks up to the United States of America, a country founded upon the principles of morality, decency, and trust in God. A country where all people, all races, and all cultures can live side by side with mutual tolerance and respect. A country where each and every one of us can lift our heads and be proud of our roots and our identity. A country where we can all work together to permeate goodness, decency, and morality in our society. These are the ideals that make us the role model of the world. May God Almighty bestow upon the leaders of this great town the wisdom and understanding to continue in the path of justice and goodness. Bless these individuals elected by the people in whom faith and confidence have been placed to legislate laws making decisions that will affect the lives of their citizens. Let them recognize that this is not only a great honor and civic responsibility, but a holy endeavor as well. Next week is Rosh Hashanah. We celebrate by eating apples and honey, symbolic of a sweet new year, attending services, and with the blowing of the shofar, a symbolic of a cry, a simple cry from the depths of one heart, searching for connection and meaning. Rosh Hashanah marks the anniversary of the sixth day of creation, the day Adam and Eve were created. Adam, the first human being, opened his eyes to a world that appeared to have always been. He lifted his eyes to the vast sky above, he gazed about at the bustling life. He beheld mighty mountains and majestic waterfalls, flowing rivers and forests. He cried out, "This is not a sky, this is the vast glory of my maker. This is not a mountain or a waterfall, a tiger or an ant, this is all the majesty of an infinite being who created a world out of kindness and might, beauty and wonder, glory and majesty, so that his creatures might know him. I know that this is it. I know that this is not a jungle, this is the garden of a great and magnificent king." This is why Rosh Hashanah is called the first day of creation. If it is only then that the world know it have meaning. And on each Rosh Hashanah, we replay that scene, we discover meaning in our world, and the world is born again. I would like to conclude with a special blessing. Oh, Se Shalom bim Romav, hu ya'ah se Shalom alenu biyachol Yisrael viyimru, amen. May he who makes peace on high, may he bring peace upon us and appall all of humanity, and let us all say together, amen.
Thank you Rabbi, and thank you Councilman Nicole, much appreciated. Happy holiday. All right, we are going on to, let's see here, we have no special presentations. We're on to public communications already. Now's the time and place for public comments, five minute limit per person. If you'd like to speak, please come forward. Or Madam Clerk, do you have some cards?
I do, I have Elena Maloney.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Elena Maloney, and I serve as the executive director of the Inu Star Family Justice Center. We are a domestic violence agency serving the South Bay. It took me exactly five minutes to get here from Hawthorne, El Segundo, so we are actually very close. I'm here today to just introduce ourselves briefly. We would like to be a resource for your city as well. We serve, as I said, we serve the entire South Bay. We have an array of services, including assisting victims with filing restraining orders. We provide court support, we do domestic violence education, parenting classes, and we do this all at no cost. And we also do it all in English and in Spanish. So I have here today some flyers, two flyers actually. One is for the services, which I hope can leave here somewhere. And the other flyer is about an event that we have. October is known as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Each month, except for the last two years because of COVID, but each month we do some type of an awareness campaign to bring awareness to this issue. And we have a very nice event coming up called the Power of Hope, because hope is a very important element in one's life, especially one who is a victim. At this event, we are also going to be honoring our own Chief of Police, Chief Heshi. Senator Bedford will be coming down to do an award for him. I would love to see some people from the city of El Segundo join us. And I will leave all of this with you. I hope that some of you will take advantage of these services. And also, we'd like to invite everyone to just tour our facility, so you can see exactly what the experience of the client is at our facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. The clerk will take those right here. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I only had one card to see.
Okay, anyone else here for public communication? Go ahead once, go ahead twice. Okay, thank you, that closes public comments. City manager, just a quick follow-up, I know we have a report from police chief. Do we, do we work with this? I assume they're a nonprofit organization. Do we work with our police department? Maybe Chief could talk about that.
Well, that's Chief as I introduce.
As we get calls related to that.
Yes, that'd be good to know. Yes, Mayor and council, I've asked our police chief, Jaime Bermudez, to provide a public safety update, if you will, at this point in the meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I do want to provide an update on our staffing levels. And one other incident, our current staffing is at 60 officers. We're authorized 62. Out of those 60 officers, we currently have three officers on field training, which means they're currently being trained to be solo officers. We have three in the academy, and we also have three injured on duty status. We're actively recruiting for entry level and lateral officers, and we have several in backgrounds. Fortunately, I anticipate being at 62, our authorized number here soon. And that's important, because we currently have about 15 officers potentially being able to retire at the end of next year. So it's important to fill our ranks here with officers before that happens. Also, I'd like to update the council on an incident that we had earlier this year on Center Street in May of this year, where a suspect was able to evade officers during an incident. I'm happy to report that our detectives were able to identify the suspect as Jonathan Medina, 23-year-old out of Linwood. He's currently in jail, and we will be presenting that case to the DA's office on multiple charges. That was great follow-up by our detectives. That's all I have. As far as the question regarding the organization, it is not an organization we currently work with, but I'll take the flyers, and I will certainly make sure that our detectives have that information.
Yeah, I'm a domestic abuse one that happens. I know we have a mental health technician, still one day a week on average, is that right?
I believe it. Well, we have them available to us.
As needed as well.
Every day is needed. However, they're here in El Segundo, I believe, one or two days a week.
When there are domestic abuse calls, do the officers get involved and refer? Or is it, is that, I guess where does the service stop?
Well, we have a victim assistance position at the PD, which is currently vacant. She just currently recently left. But yeah, we have someone who reaches out to the victim and provides assistance, victim assistance, and anything that the victim may need, either with the courts or through our agency.
Okay, great. It would be, I think the timing's great for this information. Councilman Jeru.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you. I just wanted to reiterate or make sure, clarify that we are actively recruiting for new officers.
Yeah, definitely, we are for both entry level and laterals.
And there is no freeze on anything? The council, nobody in the city has frozen your ability to hire into the necessary positions?
No.
Okay, so it's just a matter of, it takes a lot longer to onboard, obviously, a law enforcement officer than it does for other positions within the city?
Yeah, we're actively recruiting. You probably see those signs on Sepulveda and Main Street, and we're also online. We have about seven to 10 people in backgrounds right now, so hopefully we get a couple of those to come onboard.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of the things that, in preparation for the state of the city, we did a little research, and it was interesting to note that last year alone, 17% of our sworn police officer force was promoted. So that's great, we're providing opportunities as well. And also, there was a stat, I think the number Daryl and Barbara's here too, was like 307 applicants for a police officer trainee. That's, do you remember that on the slide?
I do remember that.
Yeah, so I don't know, that seems like a good number. How are you feeling about our ability to compete and attract candidates? And is there anything that you need from us to continue to do so?
You know, one of the things that we did earlier this year that was very successful for us, we currently have a personnel sergeant. We temporarily reassigned a detective to personnel to help him do the recruitment. In fact, he's working the city council today, Officer Jeremy Glunt, Detective Jeremy Glunt. He was able to come in to personnel, get that wheel rolling, and just help out tremendously. And so, he's back in detectives, but we're moving on that front for recruitment, and it's worked out really well for us. The numbers have really shown that.
And I have one question. So we also brought on a crime analyst, correct? Like a female crime analyst that was doing a lot of the analytics for us? And is that sufficient enough for you to continue to solve these crimes?
Yeah, we brought in a crime analyst about two years ago. Her name's Tasha Horn, she's worked out really well, fantastic resource for us.
And that's sufficient?
Yes, one crime analyst is sufficient for what we have. Thank you.
Chief, just a couple items. On the personnel side, I know that we have given you a bit of a slush fund if there's retirees who want to come back and do that narrow vision of patrol. But I think additionally, in that vein, if, in the hiring process, if you look at the crystal ball and think you're gonna have five officers retire, and we are at the mandated 62, but you would like to over-hire to make sure you have ready officers should those five retire? I think that's something that if you raised at the council, I suspect you would not get a tremendous amount of pushback on to make sure that we don't have a sufficient dip in manpower. Administration aside, I know it's incredibly frustrating sometimes for the public, particularly if there's a high-profile criminal incident, and they feel somewhat unsatisfied when we tell them it's an active investigation. But I think this really validates that it is an active investigation. And I think that the persistence of your detectives, probably your analysts and your officers on this should not go unnoticed. And it takes a great deal of discipline to not, I think, break your bearing when people want to know, well, what's the status of the investigation? Principally, probably us five. But so congratulations on running this with the ground.
Thank you, I appreciate that feedback. You know, as I mentioned, it was, we were getting a lot of inquiries from the public or residents about that incident. And unfortunately, we couldn't release a lot of information. We had to make sure that if he was listening, or if someone knew him in the city, that he didn't go into hiding. And fortunately for us, we were able to identify him, and he's now in custody. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
All right, any follow-up? Mr. George?
Mayor, I could, I was, I'm prepared to give an update on staff's efforts in working and dealing with the Hyperion treatment plant situation. I knew that now there's an opportunity, at the end of the meeting, the city manager also has comments.
What do you guys think? Yeah, now's good.
Okay.
Please, thanks.
Yes, and following up, our last council meeting, as you know, we had a significant turnout from the public regarding the latest issues with Hyperion, particularly the odors that seem to have significantly increased over a period of time. Since that meeting, staff has been very active in terms of following up on a number of areas. We had a special meeting, as you know, following that last Tuesday council meeting, where the city council at that time declared a public health emergency, and also gave authority to the city attorney to initiate a lawsuit against the city of Los Angeles. So those, both of those items are in motion. Declaring the health, the public health emergency has allowed us to really begin to announce that now on all of our social media platforms, which Barbara and her staff are doing an excellent job on. Also, under a public health emergency, it gives the city managers certain authorities to take immediate actions upon necessary. And then also, that gives us the ability to access federal and state funds, should they become available. We can start looking at that to assist in any implementation that ultimately takes place over at Hyperion. Staff immediately released a press release after that special meeting, identifying all of this. The city attorney and I have already begun to discuss reaching out to the LA City Attorney's Office to initiate meetings to discuss what it means to, for us, the city of El Segundo, to initiate that lawsuit. And we're probably looking at maybe another two to three weeks before actually potentially filing a lawsuit. In addition to, Mark, you can chime in on that if you'd like.
Yeah, I was gonna add that as part of this process, the city of El Segundo did sue Hyperion or the city of LA about 27, 28 years ago. And we're gonna try talking them about the things that we're trying to accomplish. I mean, we're moving forward on preparing everything that we need to file, but it is, this is not a simple lawsuit. And engaging in discussions, whether they're productive or not, we don't know. But we know where the lines of communications are, we know which attorneys are working on this matter for LA through the AQMD. And so, we're gonna start those, we're gonna start a dialogue there. How far it will go will really be dependent upon the city of LA and how cooperative they'll be. So, let's fill that in a little bit.
And actually, speaking of AQMD, I will be meeting with the vice chair of AQMD tomorrow, directly to begin discussion on what our city efforts have been, and to really get her engaged now in the seriousness of this. Another major element that we've been working on is really developing a comprehensive communication strategy, where we've got a matrix of all of the efforts that will be undertaken with relevant staff and timelines associated with engaging that, for instance, videos, updating our website, dedicating a website now specifically to Hyperion, which is, which will be elsegundo.org/hyperion. So all our information that we gather will be on our website, and the public can certainly look at that whenever they desire. We've begun to reach out to all of the print media, LA Times, Daily Breeze, Beach Reporters, those types of newspapers to disseminate information. We've begun to reach out to the LA mayoral candidates, the District 11 candidates now that are running for that district where Hyperion sits in LA City. So a number of efforts are being taken, taking place now on a communications level, and we'll be ramping up all of those efforts moving forward. So, just wanted to update you that we've really ramped things up and begun to, again, well, in addition to what we've already done, have really profiled now all of these efforts moving forward.
Eddie, a couple questions. One is, Barbara Romero or anyone else in the city of LA leadership responded? Are they just being quiet because of impending lawsuits?
Very quiet. Have not, and I have had regular dialogue with Ms. Romero, but have not heard anything. And Elias, have you, Public Works Director has not received any?
Any more movement on the, I know that there were 33 items in that action plan coming out of the recommendations with the ad hoc committee with the specialists from UCLA. And I think you said less than 10 were implemented to date. Is any movement on that? Any developments there?
I don't have any information one way or another. I don't think that they're really very good at trying to.
Okay. And then when can the public expect to see this communication matrix you talked about?
We will have this, I think by the end of the week, in terms of the timelines and the staff. And we'll prepare that and send that out to the council, and we'll put that on the website.
Are we gonna push that through .gov to email subscribers?
Yes, we can do a bulletin to our email subscribers. And then, as City Manager mentioned, we have elsegundo.org/hyperion, it'll be posted there. And we're just finalizing it now in terms of completion dates and adding a bit more detail to it, but it's ready.
Great. And then AQMD, what's the next steps there? They finished their order of abatement hearing, correct?
Yes, they finished.
What comes out of that?
Well, the actually abatement order has been published, and you know.
They, I mean, there's compliance issues in there, and then, so they'll, they're going to monitor and see whether or not Hyperion will comply. I know from watching prior hearings, there's times when Hyperion complies with things, and there's times when they don't. And I know there's frustration on the board when they don't see compliance. And there are also another approximately 14 outstanding violations, or what's? Yeah, I mean, so there's more hearings to come about violations at the plant. So it's hard to predict exactly what, I mean, the board has limited enforcement authority on some of the issues. That's one of the problems, and really, one of the reasons to go to the court system is is if AQMD has limited authority, then we need to seek a branch of government that has the authority to take care of the issue. And part of the issue is that they've identified that they don't have the authority to require the air monitors that they feel need to be placed at the, at the plant. As, they do have that authority over Chevron, because it's a private entity, and because of its, the type of plant it is, but they don't have that specific authority for Hyperion.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just have one. So just for, to let the public know, the Hyperion is not held to the same standards as a private company as Chevron is. Like, some of the requirements that Chevron has to adhere to, because it's, the Hyperion is a public facility, they do not have to adhere to those same standards, correct?
I think part of it's because it's not a refinery like Chevron. And then I think, I know part of the other issue is, and people have made this statement that it's, I don't wanna say it's too big to fail, it's too big to close down. And this is part of what I see the board wrestle with, is, okay, they would shut down if it was a smaller enterprise, even maybe a public agency that was doing something wrong, they would force it to shut down. They just don't know what to do, because they can't force it to shut down. I really feel that that's a huge, their hands are really tied because of that. And they know the fines, to the extent they get fined, that Hyperion will just pass those along to the ratepayers. And so then they feel like they're just punishing the people that are paying for the service. I mean, they've said that during these meetings, and you know, this is a real problem for them.
My question just comes down to that pay thing. We constantly look at our cost of service, and all we can charge is, charge any resident or any business coming into this town, is what does it cost us to provide that service? Right? And we audit things, some prices go up, some prices go down. Right? And so I've looked at this over and over again, and I continue to ask the same question, is if they are fined by AQMD, a state, a government, whoever it may be, how can they pass that along to the ratepayer? Because that's not the cost of them doing business. It's not the cost of them providing the service. So I just.
I don't know that that's, their Proposition 218, which governs what can go into the cost of providing service. I don't think there's been anything specifically that addresses fines. There are other areas of law where you're right, generally fines for doing things the right, wrong way are not something that you can pass along, or if you're a business and you're fined by the government, you don't get to write off on your taxes that fine. There's usually, penalties and fines usually don't allow you to get around them by just putting it through your business in some other way. But I'm, I'm not aware of anything specifically that addresses that in Prop 218. And I think a court might agree with you. And then the other big issue there is filing a legal action against the city of LA of that nature, and the resources that go into that, on that particular issue.
And then just for, to remind everybody, our rates went up, like almost, was it?
That's an agendized item. We'll come back to that in a second. That's an agendized item. It's not gonna sneak through consent, Elias, it's not gonna sneak through. If I could throw something out in terms of my two cents, not to take anything away from what my colleague said, but when we work with the city of LA's electeds, it's worth noting that the candidates vying for District 11 are both based in Venice. The current serving council member's headquarters in Westchester, he had a front row seat for how much those Playa del Rey residents and Westchester residents were getting this smell as well. I think it is going to take an extraordinary amount of proactive communication from us to get those candidates' attention, should they be seated, to remind them that they have constituents in the southern part of that district that are being affected by this, because I think they will want to serve them, but that's not the center of gravity of that district. So it's a bit of a cautionary tale of how we work on that. And I'm sure your staff is gonna relish the idea of schlepping to Venice to beat down the door and talk to them, but.
Okay, good news, better news, I should say, is Senator Ben Allen agreed to pursue legislation with us. So I just got text confirmation from him earlier today that he is willing to embark on legislation similar to what Assembly Member Marasucci enacted with the refinery fence line monitoring, using that as a boilerplate to then work off of. So that's good news. He understands, he was at our state of the city, so was Assembly Member Marasucci, who's not yet our assembly member, but will be. And they both are well aware and willing to support us as well. So that bodes well for us and other cities in California, should it pass, so. Okay, I think if you could give us an update on Hyperion, I think everyone on council would appreciate this every time we meet.
Sure.
Just because it's such a, it's such an important issue for all of us.
We'll do, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? All right, we are on to procedural motion, item A, read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Do we have a motion to do so?
Jeru so moves.
You have a second?
Nicole's second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks. All right, it sounds like we're gonna have a poll on consent.
Just number five for me, please, Mr. Mayor.
Number five. I would like a brief discussion on item six, please. Any other polls? Okay, do we have a motion to approve items two, three, four?
So moved.
Seven, sorry, seven through 10? So moved, Lance, do you have a second?
Persak's second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, five zero. Item five, Mayor Pratim.
The Imperial Sewer Flume and Sand Hill Sewer Flume Rehabilitation Project. I call this, I'm gonna set you up Director Sassoon. This is, the reason I wanted to pull this is before things went sideways with the actual operation at Hyperion, if you remember, our first series of meetings with them about the 90% rate increase. And in that, they furnished a series of data points on both our liquid and solid waste that defied comprehension to us. We had not added a series of restaurants, we had not added high-density residential, and the numbers didn't make sense. And we'd asked them in successive meetings to come and present why that had occurred, and to ask if they were just passing through deferred maintenance under the guise of providing a cost of service. We did not receive satisfactory answers to that. And this item reflects some of the hard work of Director Sassoon's staff of going to our actual sewage pipes and replacing the meters in them, so we can get an accurate measure. Now, our ability to recoup overcharges, because their rate increase is based on a projection of the amount of waste we're sending them, we believe that to not be accurate. If we prove it to be inaccurate, what's our ability to recoup those? I would leave that to the city attorney. I don't know that we are likely to be able to go back and get a credit and reduce our resident sewer bills on the west side of town. But it would certainly be illustrative if they were taking such a. taking such a massive increase in our bills based on data that looked impossible and we may be able to improve was inaccurate. Uh, but Director Sassoon, if you'd like to present, I, I do mean to steal your thunder.
Uh, sure. So the way it works, uh, once these meters are fixed and they register more accurate flow, then at the end of the year, uh, Hyperion goes back and they settle the numbers. They, they compare the numbers that are reported, reported based, based on these flumes to the projected values and they settle the numbers accordingly. The issue is for the last few years, uh, what we can do. And, and, uh, I, I'm going to try to see if, if I could continue my discussion with Hyperion about the last previous, uh, at least three years, because I don't think by a lot we can go beyond three years. For the last three years and see if there is room to, to negotiate and talk to Hyperion and based on the fact that really has not, not a whole lot has changed. And, and these, these meters that are now, now accurate, after we get a year of readings, we can go back and see, you know, what they have been registering and be able to rectify, if you would, the wrong flows that, that were reported, that, that was based on, on, on the, and the projections were based on those numbers and try to see if we can recoup some of the money that, that they already have charged us. And I'll be working toward that goal. To what extent I'll be successful, uh, that is remain to be seen.
And I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but this is conceivably hundreds of thousands of dollars of overcharge, of mischarge to our residents per year.
And can we make sure that we get the data, the data so that we actually get the report with the, with the analysis?
Of course.
Not just, oh no, we didn't find anything. Like I, we want to see the actual data. We want to see the report with the analysis.
Sure.
Not the raw data, though.
Not the raw data.
With, with, I'll move approval.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. Uh, Elias, please tap there. Item six. It's such an important project. I know we got Measure M funds for that. Can you just highlight for the audience and the viewing public what we're going to get done with this, with this project, please?
Sure. So this, this project, frankly, you're going to see a total overhaul of El Segundo. It is going to be a new surface, uh, uh, areas where there are non-existing ADA ramps. You're going to see ramps, you're going to see fixed curbs, uh, and, and, and frankly, uh, a lot of other streets that are crossing El Segundo, we're going to be adding back lanes. So this project is very significant. It's about $7 million. And as such, it is going to, whether we like it or not, is going to impact traffic to, to, to some extent. So we try to leave and, and, not that we try, we will make sure that, that uh, one lane is open to traffic in each direction. Uh, but we have left it to the contractor because they'll be in the best position to tell us how to go forward. But we'll review that very thoroughly. So, uh, by end of this project, you're almost going to have a brand new street with new, new curbs, sidewalks, ramps. Uh, in some areas, we're going to go as deep as eight inches and have a cement treated base. And then in some area, not so much. And then everything is going to get two-inch overlay. So depending on, on the failure of the base, if you would, and the top of soil, every section is going to be treated differently. So this project has been in the works for, for almost two, two and a half years. So this is a good day. Uh, we're going forward with this project is, is, is going to allow us to really make a big difference.
And how much of the $7 million came from, uh, the Measure M funds?
Uh, almost exclusively, the funding of this project is coming, uh, either from Measure M or Prop C. So, uh, four and a half million is a grand, is really grand money that, that we are getting. And then we also are getting, uh, the, some from Prop C and some from other reserve federal funds that, 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 and Metro, they, they've been very kind to us. They, they have allowed us to increase the scope of work, uh, and allowing us to, to go back to them and, 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 and without prejudice, that means we can go back and claim more money and, and it's, it's all good.
I want to just acknowledge the importance. I don't think most of our residents know what the South Bay City Council of Governments is, but there's 16 other cities involved, including the city of LA, LA County. I just finished as Chair of that Board. Mayor Protem is the Committee Chair for Transportation. I was previously the Chair for Transportation Committee and that body is incredibly important because they decide and they allocate funds. They decide. That's why we're getting Park Place done, the design funds, is because we had the support of the Chair of Metro, which is Mayor Jim Butts of Inglewood at the time.
Right.
And we gave him a letter of support for his Inglewood Transit Corridor project, which we believe in. And now we're going to get El Segundo Boulevard done. And we paid for it indirectly because it comes from Measure M and Measure R, which we all pay for. But it's very competitive process to get those funds allocated. So I want to just trust to my colleagues and residents, the importance of the South Bay City Council of Governments and being actively involved and having members of us up, up here involved in that, those boards on a go-forward basis. So thank you, Mr. Sassoon. It's good news. I mean, that's, can you also tell us what the score is of that road right now? I know there's an index.
Yeah, the score, it varies, but the score is as, as low as 40, 46. It's, it's very low.
It's bad in spots.
It's bad. So I want to take this opportunity and really would like to give a lot of credit to Cheryl Ebert, our project manager for this city of El Segundo. She worked very hard on this. Uh, so did, uh, her supervisor, the city engineer, Mr. LeFond Ju. So I don't want to get any credit. Frankly, the credit goes, goes to those guys, particularly Ms., Ms. Cheryl Ebert's. And I want to thank her for, for doing such a wonderful job.
Thank you, Cheryl LeFond. We appreciate it.
I just have one question. When do we anticipate work to begin?
Uh, with the council's blessing, uh, we are going to advertise this project, uh, as soon as possible. And, uh, having, uh, the, uh, you know, month of December, not much happening. So I would expect to be back at the city council meeting early, early next year for the award, frankly. Uh, and then the construction begins shortly after the contract is executed. So maybe spring of 2023 is, is really a, a practical date that I can share with you.
And how long will that, will the project take?
I would, I would expect the project, well, I, I believe it's 160 working days, which translates almost, you multiply this by two given holidays and weekends. So it's going to be practically about a year. So we're looking at about a year.
Will this affect the, what's the development, the Lundquist Project, Mar Ventures? Get the name of it. Nash Exchange. Is this going to affect that development at all or?
It's, it, this project is going to impact to some extent just about everybody and every property that fronts. So our job is to reduce that impact to the best possible way. And, and, and we, you know, I commit to you that, that we'll have the best, uh, supervision on this project, inspector, and we'll make sure that the impact is least amount. And we'll make sure that all businesses are well, you know, the signs are up, the entrance exits and the egress, egress at any given point is well protected. And, and that is, that is going to be our job and we'll make sure of that.
So as soon as we, it gets all approved and we're out, going out, I think it would be great for us to start the community outreach, especially to the businesses on, on El Segundo Boulevard, you know, the Chevrons, the continental. So that they can plan for it and they can let us know if there's any planned development or planned, uh, planned activity that we need to avoid. But
Yeah, of course.
I know most of these companies plan quite far out. And if we, if we know it's going to start in early spring through, through, almost for a full year, we, and then, you know, with the, um, with any big sporting events coming to town, like to, to town, or like to the, you know, the stadium, we just need to make sure that we're, we're being, paying attention to everything.
Yeah, question on that. I know the northern, no, southernmost lane of El Segundo Boulevard gets a ton of wear and tear from trucks, big tractor trailers coming and going from the industrial part of town all the way to the 405, I believe. Are we doing anything differently there to compensate for the wear and tear of those heavy tractor trailers on El Segundo Boulevard in that lane in particular? That lane in particular gets beat up and is very bad.
Right. So every section is, as I indicated, uh, is designed differently. So that part is beefed up. So hopefully that will be taken care of during the construction. And, and you're, you're, you, you, I fully agree with you.
Okay.
Because the chargers, they're going to be starting their construction or in the beginning phase of their construction. And are they going to be using that El Segundo Boulevard thoroughfare area or are they coming down Rose Grants? So we just need to make sure that we're working with them as well.
Yeah. So, uh, in either way, this El Segundo, as I indicated, the sections, uh, the, the paving cross-sections are going to be beefed up that it would withstand heavy traffic flow. So even if they want to use El Segundo, it, it'll be fine.
I'm excited. I move approval.
Can I, can I belabor this for one more second, Mr. Mayor? And that's that, that we get such a minuscule amount of our tax dollars that we contribute to the state and federal and county back that the staff, beyond, beyond just Elias's staff, whether it's Wreckin' Parks or Development Services, the, the willingness to so aggressively apply for funding opportunities is, I think, a credit to you. And I think that, that, that it accredited to you, Daryl, to the, to the staff. It is a remarkable number of things we come here that are indirectly things we paid for, but that otherwise would just evaporate into the, the great, um, wood chipper of Sacramento. So I, I appreciate the efforts and I, and I think it's really remarkable that this is, that this is cost neutral to us.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Move approval. Do we have a second?
Per sec, second.
Thank you. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. That concludes consent. We're going to move up a presentation. That's okay with our elected city treasurer? Yeah? Okay. So we have a presentation. The item number is 15 and 16. Thank you. So we're lucky to have City Treasurer Matt Robinson here to talk about a resolution to adopt an updated investment policy as well as a resolution authorizing investment of monies in a local agency investment fund by specified city officers. And Daryl, anything to introduce here or are we just going straight to Mr. Robinson?
No, we'll just go straight to, uh, Mr. Robinson.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I'm waiting for this to fire up. I think you guys have all the, like, the resolutions ahead of you, or in front of you.
Hey, Matt, do you mind speaking a little? I don't know if it's on or?
Sorry, there we go. Um, so if you're looking at the, the original one with the investment policy, it's a long overdue update to the investment policy. Uh, there haven't been a whole lot of changes. Uh, I'll keep it short as, as, as long as you guys don't have any questions, which I'm happy to get grilled upon if, if you need to. Um, but, um, you know, the first one is uh, on the Section 7, Authorized Investments. I don't, I'm not able to show it up on the screen, but as I'm still waiting for this to load up, but, um, more or less that there, there are a number of restrictions by asset class that were restrictive for us. Um, and for good reason, because I think that there was worry that, you know, an 18-year-old could get hired or could get elected in and not know what they're doing. And, um, you know, so we kind of put some really stiff guardrails around there, um, uh, the, the previous treasurer did. Now that that's not really as much of a concern and we're finding that, you know, we were affected by some of those restrictions, we've increased, we've increased some of the asset class, uh, allotments. In particular, I think the bigger ones are the JPAP, which is the Joint Powers Authority, Authority Pool, which, um, was particularly one of the, the better options that we've had, you know, recently to invest in and haven't been able to go past 30%. So we kind of, we took the, the guardrails off that one. And these aren't, these aren't necessarily super liberal guardrails. Uh, they're, they're outlined by CDIAC, so this is accepted by the state and those are typically pretty stringent already. Um, so anyway, we, we allowed for that to happen and then mutual funds, uh, have been moved from 5% max to 20% max. Um, and so those are the kind of the big changes in that area in terms of loosening things up. Um, and, uh, we actually don't have any immediate plans to, to test any of those boundaries anyway. Uh, we just want to have the flexibility there. Um, and then we made it a lot more restrictive in other ways. There, any asset classes that we're not typically active in, I just went ahead and, and said that these are not permitted from an individual investment standpoint. We could buy a mutual fund or a JPAP or if they hold them in life, we can hold them obviously, but not direct investments from us. Uh, the other thing that I did was, you know, to increase the diversification, um, I made sure that, uh, we have, instead of like a, like our CDs, we could have invested $10 million in a single CD. We could have invested $10 million in an individual's, uh, city's POB issuance, which is a problem. And so I basically forced, uh, there to be a max of 1% of the, of the city portfolio and, and any individual issue that's not backed fully by the, by the, uh, the government. So, uh, that was, that's seven. And then, uh, Section 8, I actually call out individual investment pools and mutual funds that are allowed instead of just kind of having that a little bit more vague. So we would have to come in front of you if we wanted to invest in anything outside of, of those. And, um, the, the additions there in, to, to what we already have, we can invest in camp, but I added three, uh, three, uh, that are BlackRock funds from CalTrust. They're called CalTrust. And they are JPAP funds and, uh, we've done our due diligence on those and we already have open accounts there, but we haven't invested because this isn't, um, this won't be effective until October 1st. Uh, and then there's three Vanguard mutual funds that are, uh, very, very short-term in nature, uh, that are, you know, we just want to have at, at our disposal if we need to invest, you know, into a mutual fund, uh, which the city hasn't done in the past, but, you know, just want to keep that door open. Then the other, the other, I guess, you know, I added something about maximum maturities. So the state, uh, the state makes sure that we don't have a maximum maturity over five years. I wanted to make, you, you can actually get special, um, special, uh, special, I guess, acceptance for an investment program if it's longer than five years. You know, if you're not familiar with bonds, the longer you go out, the longer the maturity, the more risk there is. Um, I'm not advocating that the city takes on more risk by, by taking on longer maturities, but if we're in a mutual fund that is diversified and the duration or the, the average maturity, I guess you could also say, is less than five years, um, I'm, I'm wanting to, to at least put those on the table. I don't have any in that list, uh, of approved securities that, that fit that description, but I'm, I guess, laying the groundwork for that potentially. Uh, and then the last one, uh, basically just a find and replace of Director of Finance with the Chief Financial Officer to, to reflect organizational changes around here. So happy to answer any questions if there's anything that seems out of place there or.
I just have a question on the Investment Advisory Committee.
Sorry, what was that?
The Investment Advisory Committee, Matt? Is that still, what's the deal there?
That's a great question. I, I, I've asked the same question. I think, I, I actually don't know exactly where that's at and we haven't met in a while. Uh, we, we had our la, so I was, I was on it and I didn't get replaced. And then we have, uh, Steve Simitana, who was the other resident who stepped out, or who, who stepped away. Uh, his term was over and didn't fill that one. And so, you know, that's something I, you know, I don't know.
We might, I know we got a whole bunch of CCB interviews. Maybe that's one of them that we're interviewing candidates for. I'm not sure. Do you know, Daryl?
No, I don't know. I'll, I'll follow up on that.
I, I, I mean, it's in here for a reason. I think it's, it's really just about checks and balances, I'm, I'm guessing, right? A little bit oversight? Yeah.
Two interviews next month.
Awesome.
Oh, all right. Okay.
Has it lined up?
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I actually asked about that before, before submitting this, you know, to make sure that this was going to, that that was still going to be a thing going forward. And I got a positive answer for that, so.
Great. Any questions on that particular resolution, the investment policy?
If, if, in the coming reorganization, when we go to an appointed treasurer, does our org chart, is it going to specify that the Chief Financial Officer and the treasurer are two separate individuals? Because that is a stipulation here for the controls. So, because I think initially the concept was that those would be consolidated. But if there's, this seems to call for being two distinctive positions. Do we, I mean, do we know, that's not a question for the treasurer. I don't know. That's
No, it's a really good question though.
So, um, I think organizationally that is separate though, isn't it, Joe?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, I'm Harrison. So a lot of cities that have that model, um, that shift from the elected treasurer to an appointed treasurer, typically it, it falls under the purview of the Chief Financial Officer, but they have staff that, uh, perform those functions, just like today. So today it's, uh, Dino and, um, as the manager, um, and he has two, uh, lower. So today it's Dino and as the manager and he has two lower level staff members that help support him do those treasury functions. So that would still happen. So I even today, I don't have the ability to have my hands in in the pot, so to speak, but oversee the operations in conjunction with the appointed treasurer. So that's typically that's how it works. I don't know if that was the plan at the time Measure T was put out there. But I assume that the city manager would work with the outgoing treasurer and council on how that'd be set up before.
Because that is the key internal controls that the CFO in this is designed to be the auditor of the treasurer. But if that's the case, then whenever we move to that appointed piece, because this is where things go can go awry, we'll want to stipulate whatever barriers there are between the two. But I just I just saw that as the internal control and saw that two years from now, when we when when our current treasurer is having Lemonade with his feet up reading comic books.
So like, for instance, today I have the ability to view transactions and I get emails on large transactions. In fact, there was one earlier, I think it was last week, you know, I sent Matt an email. I said, was this, you know, a valid transaction that occurred? Yes, it did. So I don't have the ability today to actually go in there and move money around, but I have the ability to oversee that and and to audit that. And we have internal controls in place, nor would I want the ability to have my hands in in that. So I would suspect that those internal controls would continue with lower level staff, manager and lower level staff that would perform those functions. And for instance, today, Dino's title is Treasury and Customer Service Manager and he has Deputy City Treasurer, I'm sorry, Deputy Treasurer One and a Deputy Treasurer Two underneath him that reports directly to him that helps support Matt in those functions.
And without putting you on the spot, it looks like there was a, at some point, a proliferation of investment instruments we put into the allowable pool that we're now radically slashing. Do we think that that we will have enough flexibility in the market under this with with fewer defined instruments? I just want to make sure we're not foreclosing the future if there's some new super awesome thing we want that manages to be triple A rated.
So we always, I mean, this is more in Matt's wheelhouse right now, but the liquidity. So the the amount of liquid investments we have is always at a certain level and it gives Matt that flexibility and plus there's always investments that are maturing on a continuous basis.
The state requires that this resolution be updated every two years, but it can be done more frequently than that if there's a need to do so.
Very well. Any further questions on this one? All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Per sec. So moved.
Who's second?
Nichols, second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you, sir. Oh, Matt, quick.
Resolution.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Do we need to read it? Sorry.
It's really short. I'll take it.
Yeah, thank you.
The resolution approving the statement of investment policy is amended and to take effect October one, twenty twenty-two. You've already voted on it. Now it's been read, so we can move on.
Thank you. Okay, item sixteen, Mr. Treasurer.
This one should be much more straightforward. Dino, Dino is much more aware of this than I am, but the life invest the life investment vehicle that we use requires a resolution to to change any any of the authorized signers for moving money in and out. In my opinion, I don't know that there's any risk involved with adding more names to that. And so we basically have the department as well as a few others that are now available because you need two signers to to move any money in or out. And it's just, you know, more of a convenience and flexibility thing than anything.
Great. Any questions on this one? All right. Would you read the resolution by title only, please?
Yes, Mayor and Council, a resolution authorizing the investment of city monies in the local agency investment fund by specified city officers is ready for adoption.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Nichols, so move.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Per sec. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your volunteering your time, Mr. Robinson. Great work. I just learned, we just talked about the state of the city. Mrs. Boss served this up. Our treasury a few years ago is ninety million. Wait, did I get? And it's a hundred twenty million now. Isn't that right? Great job. You and your predecessor, Krista Binder. Great job. Thank you for all your service. All right. Where were we? We're on item eleven. I need to recuse myself on this because I have a property in Smoky Hollow. No, we're we're on eleven. Okay, Mr. Pimentel, you have a conflict as well.
Yeah, I've got to recuse myself as well.
You're up.
And that's also because of his employer's property interest in that area.
Councilor Perschek, you have the floor.
Peter Allen.
Elias. Elias.
Yes, I will.
Okay. Okay, so item number eleven, who's going to speak?
Yes, this is this is the Public Works Council meeting. So I'll turn it over to our Public Works to try to introduce the speaker.
Right. Before I make before I make the introduction, if you would, a little background. As part of the Smoky Hollow specific plan, the the first pilot project was was implemented in January of two thousand twenty, which was adding on-street parallel parking along El Segundo. And the whole purpose of that was to add more parking in Smoky Hollow. Well, that really didn't work out very well. There were some issues. So the city council directed us to go ahead and remove those bollards and the parallel parking on on May of two thousand twenty-one and directed the staff to implement the second pilot project, which is pick couple of couple of two-way roads and make them one-way in each direction. Make a couplet as specified and shown on the Smoky Hollow specific plan and come back to the city council and see what that could be done under under that scenario. So we've done that and Mr. Giuseppe Canazzori, who is the who is with K O A is here to make that presentation and I'll I'll help him by by flipping the slides. So here is Giuseppe, please.
Good evening. My name is Giuseppe Canazzari with K O A Corporation. I'm a senior engineer and vice president with them. And as Elias was was talking, the purpose of this project is to put in a pilot project for the implementing part of the Smoky Hollow specific plan. And it's going to involve the conversion of two-way streets into one-way streets and providing angled parking in these streets. The overall goal of this project is to increase parking in the area. Next slide.
Yeah.
So in the Smoky Hollow specific plan, as you see on the screen here, this identifies the one-way street convert, the future one-way street conversions that were in the specific plan, starting that standard street all the way out to California Street. Excellent. With the pilot parking project, we we went through all the streets and we ended up settling on Nevada Street and Oregon Street. And the limits are going to be from El Segundo Boulevard to Grand Avenue. These would present a one-way couplet, be one-way, Nevada be one-way in one direction and Oregon Street would be one-way in the opposite direction. And one of the nice things about Nevada Street and Oregon Street is that it actually provides us with with two consecutive blocks of of a one-way street. And, you know, it really, if we chose one of the just one-block streets, by the time you get in there and find part it, by the time we get in there, we're already done because these these street segments are so small. Next slide. So with the angled parking analysis that we chose, since the city of El Segundo didn't have doesn't have a standard plan for angled parking standards, we decided to use the City of Los Angeles Department of Transportation angled parking standards. Our firm analyzed forty-five degree to seventy-five degree parking, but we settled on forty-five degree parking because it yielded the most gain. This is just a a couple snippets of forty-five degree parking, seventy-five degree parking. One of the biggest issues here was that after forty-five degrees, since the streets were so were so narrow, after forty-five degrees, a vehicle backing out of a parking spot would end would end up running into a parallel parked car across the street. So forty-five degree parking is is what we settled on. And also, we prepared a parking analysis table here that, you know, did two things. One, you know, back in two thousand sixteen, when the Smoky Hollow specific plan was being worked on, it was a certain number of spots and parking spaces and increase in parking spaces and percentages were developed. After we developed conceptual plans for Nevada and Oregon, Elias and and his team had us go back and reanalyze all the streets throughout throughout that were deemed for one-way conversion to see what the differences were. And if, you know, if you look at the table closely, you'll see that there's some reductions in in some of the previous numbers. And, you know, really one of the biggest reasons was that in the previous study, it was really a high-level planning level analysis. Whereas when when we've taken over this project, it's an engineering analysis. My my engineers are out in the field actually measuring where all these driveways are and we're also looking at what where it's actually legal to park. So if you go driving, driving through some of these streets, you notice who's parking in front of the driveway and and there's, you know, several red curb that's that's missing. So we're looking at this from, you know, where it's actually legal to park in in the area. But overall, with the entire Smoky Hollow area with one-way street conversion, you know, we're looking at about a twenty-two percent increase in in parking spots. Elias, did you have? Oh, we had one more slide. I'm sorry. So as far as the pilot project costs, Elias and his team had us look at three different alternatives. The first alternative was just what we were what we're proposing on these two streets, which is just signing and striping improvements only, which we're estimating about a hundred thousand dollars. The second alternative that we looked at was the the current project, but with some raised landscaping planners. With a lot of this angled parking, there's going to be a lot of dead space. At the at the intersections, there's going to be just painted curb extensions and bulbouts and felt that that was a good opportunity to put some, you know, landscaping out there and really help guide guide drivers around. And, you know, with that, we were estimating it was about three hundred thousand. And lastly, Elias and his team want us to analyze, look at an alternative that was a complete overhaul of the entire the entire street. And this included roadway rehab, replacing all the driveways, making them ADA compliant, replacing sidewalk, curb and gutter, curb ramps. It would include curb corner curb extensions with landscaping and irrigation and also all the signing stripe improvements. And we were estimating that's about two point two million for construction. And these three alternatives here, these are just looking at the the two streets that that we are that we're analyzing, Nevada and Oregon only. Anything else to add, Elias?
No. So basically today we would like to get direction from city council as to what you would like for staff to undertake.
There's no point in talking about option three, so let's not talk about it. I don't know how you feel. I think option one's the way to go. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Am I safe to assume that it's roughly twenty-five thousand dollars per section of road? Because a hundred thousand dollars and there's four sections? Like each city block is twenty-five grand to stripe?
There's a lot of contingencies that we actually added in the the cost system because there was just unknowns of when it was going to happen. We have costs rising like crazy and, you know, so there's and also several contingencies. We have four blocks that we're looking at. Each, you know, Nevada and Oregon both came out to, I think it was about thirty-five thousand each and the rest were just traffic control mobilization, all these other, you know, line items. So, you know, but and that's just, you know, construction, labor and material costs there.
Reason I ask is when I first read this report and this presentation, I thought to myself like, why are we not including California? California Street's one of the most impacted blocks over there for parking because you have plenty of residents that live in the townhouse complexes that no longer can park around the corner based upon the parking permits that are allowed over there now that I had to sit out on because Mark doesn't like me. And so I'd really like California Street to be included as well. So I'm just curious if if that's, you know, if you don't have that exact number, but if that's a twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollar addition to this hundred thousand dollar ask, because based upon this, you can add eight additional parking spaces. I mean, eight additional parking spaces, that's a real life change to those residents that live over there. Being someone who used to live there, I do not conflict out on that anymore. It's over ten years ago, but that that was my thought. I saw this as option one all day long and potentially the addition of that one block, the three hundred block of California Street, sorry, two hundred block of California Street going to one-way with angled.
And then just for clarification, the thirty-five thousand dollars estimate, does that include signage and community outreach?
That's just paint and sign and signs.
So we have the added cost of the additional signage and the community outreach component, correct, Elias?
Yes.
How much would that cost?
The community outreach, it really won't won't be that expensive.
But the signage, we have to...
The signage, the signs, if if the city fabricates, it'll be cheaper. If we do not, the cost of fabrication installation of of any sign is about roughly four hundred to five hundred dollars.
It's minimal. Okay.
Yeah, each sign, that is.
All right. So I got a couple of things. This is from two thousand eighteen, so that was before I was up here, so I can ask these questions. What are we trying to accomplish?
So the purpose is really the way I understand it, and I wasn't here either. The the purpose is to increase the number of on-street parking in the Smoky Hollow. In other words, right now, there are a lot of businesses that they feel like there is not there is not enough parking on streets. So this was this is an attempt to increase the the parking on on streets, basically.
Okay, so can you pull that back up again? You're, I think it's slide seven. I want to take a look at. So I'm I'm just going over this whole thing because are are we trying to test out what angled parking is going to do? Can't we just look at Richmond? I mean, I I guess I'm trying to figure out what we're piloting here. We we understand that if we do this and we stripe them, it's going to equate to X amount of parking spaces. What are we actually studying? Like, what's the criteria for this?
Okay, so so what we're doing is existing roadways, the two-block streets are two-way streets. So we're taking a two-way roadway and making it one-way with one lane.
Get it.
And the other lane would would allow us to put angled parking on the street.
I get that. My my question is, what's the criteria for success?
The criteria for success is simply, frankly, is this is a pilot project. The criteria is whether or not, to me, how many complaints we're going to receive, if those complaints are valid or not, and how the business is going to perceive these one-way streets. How are they going to feel about it? And and anytime you change a two-way road to one-way road, you you're going to change the pattern and it takes a while for people to get used to it. So it's, you know, it's been my experience. I've I've done this a few places. In some areas, it works fine. In some areas, it it just doesn't work very well. And the whole purpose of that is to to see if this is going to be successful, not too many complaints, it does what it what it was intended to, which is which is providing more parking. And then after a year and after we look at it, we'll come back and evaluate and see whether we want to continue or not. So in a way, it makes sense to go with option number one because if it doesn't work, we can go back and redo the striping and make it like back it was the day one, like it is today.
Right. So I think if I counted in there, there's about fifteen different locations that you are considering on that chart. Sorry, I got to back this up and I think it is that guy right there.
No, they are...
You guys are clicker happy. Could you stay on that one right there? That's it, right there. Yes. So I'm just extrapolating out what this would cost. So we're saying that if it works on these two streets, it would work on all of them?
That's really the idea. If it works here and if people like this, it it gives us a pretty good parameter as as to whether or not this this would be a successful project that to... it, it gives us a pretty good parameter as, as to whether or not this, this would be a successful project that to be implemented throughout or not.
Increasing, so the total best-case scenario we're looking at, to do this entire project over all these streets and all this time is 56?
That is correct. That is correct.
But...
Go ahead.
Add this, so like this option one is just paint, right? You saw there in option three why it was so much more expensive, because if you drive through Smoky Hollow, like, I'm sorry, engineer.
Giuseppe.
Giuseppe said, people park in front of curb cuts because some of those old buildings had loading docks on the front. So there's still a curb cut where they have garage doors that then lead to a curb cut. So the angled on some of those blocks, like you could see on one of those blocks, it actually takes away a parking spot. And that's because many of those parcels are pretty narrow. And if they all had, have curb cuts, then you're not really adding any parking. And so you, it's that, I go, I, I always think of it as, if the building owner is using it, I would never, as a council member, say, well, we're taking it away and putting a curb there because we need angled parking. Because it's part of their business, it's part of the landscape of Smoky Hollow, right, and how eclectic it is. So to, I think to answer your question, does it work on every block? I don't think successfully unless you had buy-in from those building owners that it's like, yeah, no, we don't use, like, that's a garage door to a creative office, like, we don't, there is no loading dock. So yes, get rid of that curb cut and now, oh, it's not a negative now, now it's a plus five.
I wanted to mention a couple, a couple more things to add on to, to that.
Okay.
One is, you know, with these pilot projects, one of the things that's been becoming a little bit more popular these days is demonstration projects. Whether they're just a couple of days and, you know, our firm designs them and even puts them on. But some of these demonstration projects that are lasting about six months, just to put it out there on the street and see if, you know, residents are liking them. Working on something in El Monte, we're doing a traffic circle. And we're just going to be out there for six months to, you know, get the, the public's opinion on how they like that before we go out there and put it roundabout. So it's, it's, these are usually pretty low-cost alternatives before changing, oh, excuse me, changing the entire, the entire area to one-way streets. And the other thing I wanted to mention too is, these are just current counts from, from today. But, you know, if, as the area gets, let's say, certain properties get bought out by a developer and certain, and they get redeveloped, that would probably lessen the amount of driveways that are out there, which is one of actually the big issues, is that there's, there's a ton of driveways for all these businesses. And, you know, if, if the area does get developed, then, or for any future development, your, your parking gain should actually be, be more than just those 56 spots.
Yes, and I, I think to Councilmember Nichols' point, I, I, what we're doing the pilot program on is on completely business-driven streets. There's not going to be any feedback from residents because there's no residents on that street. And the other thing I'm concerned about, because, look, I was, I was on those streets yesterday. So we have that issue of we're creating parking spaces that people use to park to go to the airport and, and, and all the other problems that come along with it. Are we going to put a no overnight parking sign there?
We could do that. Also, in the long run, the city is looking at the parking citywide. And, and this will be also, I'm sure will be addressed as, as the whole bigger picture, if you would.
Okay, I, I just, again, I, I think this, this pilot is driving to down a pathway that I'm not sure we're going to be able to afford down the road, because this looks to be about a 10, 15 million dollar project at minimum, if you had to do all of it.
Well, of course, but I, I think the recommendation of the staff is to just do the, the minimum, which is just the striping. And, and after a year, analyze the situation, seek input, see what worked, what didn't work, and then come back, report back to city council and go from there.
I get it, and it's easy to throw out $100,000 like it's nothing, but it's a lot of money. And I just think our success criteria, we're relying on complaints or lack of complaints from businesses is a strange criteria. I, I, I don't, I can't wrap my head around that, to judge what the success of a pilot program is for $100,000. And it's going to be more than $100,000 as we just talked about. So I, I'm just having trouble wrapping my head around it.
The one thing we have to, because there was a lot of community outreach. There was a, a town hall meetings, we brought business people in, we brought residents in. There was a lot of dialogue around this ish, this area and this issue. And parking was the number one issue that the people expressed. And so this was definitely, you know, the, the easiest way to accommodate parking, correct?
That is, that is correct.
So my only other question, and I kind of agree with Councilwoman Nichol about if, including the California Peak Component, because it, it kind of finishes that little area. But the one area that is Center Street, you know, you get a lot of traffic coming up and down that street for the, the middle school. And I just want to make sure that we, if, if we were to move forward eventually with Center Street going one-way, we have to be, know that whatever traffic is for the middle school entrance, that's going to flip to another street. Is that street gets a lot of traffic for the middle school?
So they, so I think this, this predates, well, Mark was there. Tracy might have been listening, but otherwise this predates everybody else in this room. So they had a meeting, and it was at like, it, it may have been at the offices of, who was our lease, who's our tenant at Topgolf? Center Cal. It was at Center Cal's office, at this big meeting with the consultant that was putting together this for the Smoky Hollow Plan. The Smoky Hollow Plan was this big deal, right? It was going to revolutionize Smoky Hollow. And at the time, Center Street came up in a conversation and was like, well, you know, Center Street should remain, you know, two directions for many reasons, because a lot of people come and go from work and that's, they use Elskino Boulevard. And there was also a discussion about putting a stoplight at the top of the hill at Center and Elskino Boulevard. Because whether those, the parking pilot is out there on Elskino Boulevard or not, it's hard to turn left on Elskino Boulevard and head east if you're on any one of those streets. You got to poke out and there's obstructions on every single street. And so there was, there was a discussion of like, okay, well, why, why are we not trying to drive everyone that works in Smoky Hollow to Franklin Street, down Franklin to Center, Center to a light? Where then it's a controlled intersection and that controlled intersection then can send people out. Because if you look at our master traffic plan, Elskino Boulevard and Imperial and Pacific Coast Highway, those are our arteries, right? Well, you probably know what they're classified, the proper term, but we want to drive people there. And then when the Smoky Hollow Plan actually came out and I conflicted out on it, Center Street was proposed as being one-way in the future. And, you know, they had all these wonderful pictures of the ladder and painted crosswalks and all this angled parking and one-way streets and all this wonder. And it was like, well, how are we going to pay for all this? It's like, oh, we can't. And well, maybe the developers will help pay for it. And it's like, it, it was never going to happen. And so at that time, there was a discussion about when we repave these roads. Because they don't all get repaved at the same time, but when we repave these roads, those are funds that we get from the state, right? Or the county, right? County funds. Can we use at the same time then, okay, there's a portion for paint, for painting these streets and restriping the parking? Well, let's just restripe the parking and angled at that time. And so it may not be a straight, this is 135. Today, they're asking us, because it's a pilot program, but if it, if we coincide this with, with the repaving, then it isn't a direct additional cost to the community. Just to give you some backstory, because I'm not going to be here next year when they come to you again to tell you how it got to where we are today. So I, I mean, I think it's a good thing. Before, before Smoky Hollow Plan was even redone, there's all these buildings over there that have triple tandem parking. Did you know tandem can be defined as three cars in a row? Right? And those plans used to come before the Planning Commission with these little boxes in the center called Research and Development. Because they needed so much square footage to be office, so much to be Research and Development. And, oh, that looks like an office. No, 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 that's a storage closet, right? So that it can go through and they would always have these three tandem parking spaces in the back. And, I mean, there's, there's a big building over on Penn Street that has three tandem in the back and there's like three of these buildings next to each other. You never see two cars in those three tandem spots. They're all in the street. And so the developers were like, well, if you had more street parking, you know, we wouldn't have to game the system this way. We can change it. We can make it more usable for the community. I mean, if you look at like, I mean, he's not here, but what the mayor had to do with his building, with like the car lifts, right? Because he wanted additional square footage, so he's like, well, how can I do it? This is how I can do it, right? But, so that's, that's what drove the conversation for one-way roads and angled parking was to add more street parking. So that's why I'm in favor of this and I think it's money well-spent. And it's something that I think we will hear from some of those residents, especially the Grand Tropez residents, about having additional parking, because it is very impacted in that area. And even on Grand Avenue, because Grand Avenue, you're not allowed to park from six to eight over there. Because it's a thoroughfare for large trucks. And so you can't park along Grand Avenue. And the previous Public Works Director, I asked numerous times, why is that the case? Like, why can there not be overnight parking on Grand? Because there's residences on Grand, why can there not be overnight parking? And it's, well, because, you know, all the big delivery trucks that are coming, it's a class-one delivery road or something, right? And so this is the kind of parking, the additional spaces, I think, would truly benefit that section of town. And that's why I'm in favor.
Couple of things if you don't mind. As you know, if a new business wants to come to Smoky Hollow and they do not have enough parking, what they do is they contribute to what we call it Parking Lou. Parking Lou is, is what collects the money for every specified parking space that is not there. So the, the money for, for doing this work comes out of that fund. That's the first point I want to make. The second point, if we were to add California, then most likely we also need to add Oregon, the street next to it in order to make it, to make it couplet.
It's, it's part of it.
You already were, you were doing Nevada and Oregon, California was the, the stepchild that was left off.
But, oh, oh, yeah, but, I'm sorry, the other, don't we need to have at least even numbers? Yeah, the Oregon we are doing, but not the other.
It's only one strip.
It, it doesn't show here, but, but it, it needs to be, I mean, it, it works the best if it is even.
It's a pilot, it's a pilot.
Okay, I, I just want to make that point on.
But there is no even, it's not even on here.
It's, yeah. Do, do you think, do you think it would?
Ideally?
Yeah.
It would, it would, it would work out better. But the other thing too is on the, on the left side of the screen there is also kind of a, a odd, there's an odd number there, but it's, it's just the way the streets are. But, I mean, ideally, typically, if you're going to turn a street into a one-way street, you would, you would like to look at another street to make it one-way in the opposite direction.
Exactly, that's what I... But Kansas Street has a controlled intersection and it's two-way traffic in both directions.
Yeah.
And so, and that's the, the closest street to it, so it shouldn't matter. And California Street is not a heavily trafficked street, except for the people who live on, live adjacent to that street or work on that street.
So do you think I could add California?
Yeah.
Is that the pleasure of the city council to add California to the pilot?
Okay, so do we want to take a?
I would like to make a motion to approve the pilot program with the addition of the 200 block of California Street.
Can I ask a question before you vote?
No.
This has no fiscal impact, so at this point in time, Elias, are you looking for just direction? You're going to come back for approval of, of money or does this involve? Because it takes three votes to, to approve the expenditure of funds, so. Is this, is this, is this, is this for expenditure or is this just gets some direction?
This is for direction because the next step would be preparing the drawings, the engineering drawings and the, the striping and the signage and advertising it and get it done.
And when will that come back, Council?
Well, probably it's going to take, what, three, four months to prepare a final package that we could advertise?
Uh, we could probably do less than that.
Yeah.
So this, this, you're not looking for any expenditure, any approval to expend funds tonight then?
That is correct, because right now...
Well, then it can be approved with two this evening, but it's totally...
If he comes back and asks for money, then it's going to be the same three people. So real quick, just to, I'm going to get you there.
Maybe not.
Oh, maybe. Oh, that's right, two, three months, that's right. So he mentioned, real quickly, I just want to make sure you have, I want to get him there, because he's going to get there. So parking a loop, what he's talking about. Do you know that companies pay for imaginary parking spaces? Parking spaces that don't exist?
I am well aware of that. My point is simply this. The pilot program has to be a means to an end. I don't see the end. I see a lot of extra stuff that's going in to try to take a, a big problem that we have in the city and solve it by doing, using two streets and $100,000. That's what I'm seeing. I'm not, our entire thing is something about a, a, a parking plan for the entire city. That's one of the things we're trying to do, right?
Correct.
I, I don't see how this gets us to where we need to go. I don't, I don't know what we're learning that we don't probably already know about angled parking. We know that.
Right.
And we know it's problematic, especially in major corridors with, with big trucks and all that, we, we know that. So if we want to sit there and say, oh, we're building those, we're putting those dead striping in so the people in the, the, that didn't get the parking permits over in that area can now park on, down that road? We're not, again, I, I don't see what we're solving with the program. I just see us putting a Band-Aid over it, that's all I'm seeing.
But the one-way streets and the angled parking was something that's part of the Smoky Hollow specific plan.
Yeah.
It's part of the future planning. So the, the four years that went into planning the Smoky Hollow specific plan and then got brought forth is a future vision. Now, it's not something that can be paid for overnight, but it's a future vision. So this is a step in the direction to the future vision of the Smoky Hollow Plan. And so it, it's not a, it's not going nowhere, it's not putting a Band-Aid. It, it's like, this was a, this is a document that, that the planning department bases a ton of their decisions in this area off of. Is this Smoky Hollow specific plan and ultimately the roadway is being changed to one-way as part of that specific plan. So I think it, it is a step in the right direction where then staff and the city and the businesses and the residents and whoever traffics that area can say, hey, this works, let's continue on and change the rest of these roads on down to Main Street.
Again, I, I, all I'm seeing is we're building, we're spending X amount of money to put angled parking on areas where businesses are at. And by the way, this was before pandemic, before COVID, before all this. So the amount of people coming into the office, all that has changed, so we know that. So if the idea is to help get more parking within the city for people to utilize, residents to utilize, I'm just not seeing how this current plan for this pilot program gets us there. That, that's all I'm saying. So if you're saying that, okay, in 2000, I can't remember when the specific plan came up, was it 2018 or it was before that, when, when it was written up? It was before that. And the idea then was we're going to have one-way streets and do things this way. It's taken five-plus years to get us here. If it was such a brilliant idea, how to...
Because not many people like to buy imaginary parking spaces, but they've bought enough. And Elias seems to have the money to do this now, with these imaginary parking spaces. I can tell you this.
So this is a matter of taking the money that was collected and utilizing it?
There are eight cars, if just California Street alone, eight parking spaces on California Street alone. That's eight cars, eight cars that hold employees from SATCO. That's on the 100, that's on Elskino Boulevard and the 100 block of Kansas Street. And that takes them off of parking on the 300 and 400 blocks of Kansas Street and the 1,400 block of East Holly. That impacts the residents currently, okay? Those are businesses in town, businesses that have operating licenses long before they required parking, right? They do not park a tenth of their employee base on-site. And there's nothing you can do about it because they've been there for over 50 years. And so I'm telling you, like, this decision right now, we can say, oh, it's just for the business, it's not. This will directly impact life for those residents over there that have, pretty much just wear this on the chin every single day.
Which residents are we talking about now? The ones in, in San Tropez? Or where?
No, I'm talking, down Kansas Street, Washington Street.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the people, so employees park there because there's nowhere to park on the 100 and 200 blocks of Kansas, right? 100 and 200 blocks of Kansas, 1,400 block of Franklin, 1,300 block of Franklin, parking spots fill up like this. So they park in the residential zone and they walk to work. I mean, I can, you can come over, we can go for a walk tomorrow morning. And we don't count how many employees, I'm just saying, it's like, there's, and so like, I've talked to staff about it. I'm like, hey, can you look into this? Because, you know, do they, are they required to park any of their employees anywhere else? And the reality is they're not, they've been around that long, they don't have to. There were no requirements.
So let's land the plane on this. So bottom line is tonight, unless you're asking for money, which you're not, this will just could be, get be brought back. So you can, you can go ahead and do the job that you need to do, all right? I'm, I'm getting there, but I'm not 100% convinced yet. I would like to see if there are residents and businesses that are looking at this pilot program, because there's no one here tonight for this. There's no one speaking out about it, I didn't receive one email about it. And usually when it's a big deal and a, I get inundated and I get anything. So let's give them an opportunity to come in and say, this is how it's going to benefit me, and I can be convinced. But right now, I just don't see enough. But I think we can have consensus to move forward to do the design processes that.
Yeah, as long as the Herald asks people to email and call you regarding this issue in their article recap of.
I'll give them your personal cell after you get off council.
So the motion is to add California?
Yes.
That's the motion I made, yes.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, did you have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you.
Now, Elias, the one thing is, I, I am still struggling with the timeline, why it's going to take four months to come up with the engineering design.
No, I'm like, okay. No, the four months includes advertisement and, and going through the process and everything before we could actually work.
I think we need to shorten those windows.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think in reality, we're probably looking at about two months, max.
Um, so that moves us on, we'll invite the others back. Do you want to take a five, two-minute break, five-minute break? At 7:30, yeah, we'll take a five-minute break. So we'll be back at 7:30, 7.
For recess, thank you very much. We're going to move up item number 14, which is the Elsinogu Senior Citizens Housing Corporation Board Updated Annual Report and Request to City Council. We have Paul Lania, the Chair of Park Vista, along with Park Vista Board Member Paul Albertolo here as well. Mr. Lania, it's all yours.
Uh, I have just 16 slides for tonight. Each one will take about an hour, so, you know, we'll just be here for a little bit. Could we bring up the slides that I submitted? And if we could, could we just bring up the last slide? Please.
Which one is?
I mean, if you guys want to just read off it here, we're good to go.
You have to go to.
Okay, so.
The bottom. There you go. There you go.
So close. Thank you. If you could go to the last slide, please. Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe not. Okay, uh, we met with you, good evening, thank you for having us back. Uh, we met with you on August 9th and went through a number of permutations of what we were asking. We have three requests tonight. The first one is permit the board to raise parking rates 2% per annum until canceled. This is recommended by the City Director of Finance. We have raised 2% some years, not some years. Parking's cheap, and we don't want to make it go up dramatically, but we'd like your permission to, as you allow us to do with regular rent, increase it 2% rate. So I don't know how we, if we agendize this or how we do it, but that's our first request. The second request is regarding rental rates. So at the last meeting, a number of the City Council members said, how do we burden people? We had suggested at that time, we should increase rents to 3% for the current residents and take the, um, the percentage of market, market rate of 60%, some, you know, for other people. And what we realized was, and I think Scott, actually, you pointed this out, we might be overburdening the people who live there. And this has actually been central to my, my questions of most of you. What is our responsibility to the people who live there? So with Joe, and sat down and, and looked at a couple of options. And essentially, one is keeping the current residents at 2% of market rate, maximum increase, and increasing the market, the new entry market rate to 65%. That is, people who would move in on January 1st, would instead of paying 60% of market rate, would pay 65% of market rate. And if we do those changes, you'll, 2% current, 65% for new. And I think Joe would agree that we find ourselves in a fairly good place, even back out in 2032 or so. Um, we may be in the red, uh, let me see if I can slide backwards here. Um, I'm sure you can read this, uh, but the net is, we're in the red in 2033 to the, and then for a couple of years, at the maximum of $650,000. That is in terms of reserves. We actually will have money, or, uh, in some cases, not a, a ton of money, but enough. So based upon comments from some council members, do not ask current residents for more than 2% increase to make up for this, start 65% of market rate, January 1st, 2023, for new tenants. This puts the burden on new residents rather than existing, and the entire Park Vista board concurs. So first two asks. The third one is one that we as a board are asking of you. Joe, in his position with the city, is not necessarily in agreement. We would request the City Council formally dedicate the 504 funds solely for Park Vista. We are not comfortable looking at the expenses in the future, saying that we very likely, most likely, 80% likely, will have the 504 funds for our use. If we don't have those dollars, we will have significant problems. We will not be able to meet the needs of the facility. So we are requesting that you formally dedicate those funds to us. If you don't, that's fine too, because the city has been generous in taking those funds and giving them to Park Vista as needed. But we request to reduce the angst, frankly, of the board and some of, and the residents, that you dedicate those funds solely for Park Vista. Those are our three requests tonight. Glad to answer any questions.
Joe, where did the 504 funds come from?
I'll try to be brief about the history. So, uh, back in, I believe it was the early 80s, mid 80s, the city of Elsinogu exceeded their, what's called the GAN limit, G-A-N-N limit. Uh, so they collected too much general fund tax revenue above the legal limit they're allowed to. And they went to voters, saying, what should we do with this? You want it back as refund, or do you want to use it towards senior housing? And voters approved, and maybe Mr. Hensley would know the measure, I don't recall the measure number, but anyways, voters approved, um, using that excess tax revenue to, uh, build a senior housing facility, Park Vista. At some point, uh, Park Vista was done, developed, uh, people moved in, and the city decided to, um, create a loan between Park Vista and the general fund to repay back those excess tax revenues collected. Well, that never should have happened. Um, so that was being paid. A- as I came into the city in 2016, Mr. Hensley told me about it. It's one of the first things I, I, I did, worked with his office, and we unwound that loan. Long story short, we paid those funds back to what's called the Voters' Trust Fund, or this Fund 504, which is formerly known as Senior Housing Fund. So those are funds that are dedicated for senior housing per voters that passed this back in the 80s. Now, Park Vista is the only senior housing facility.
As of today.
But, you know, the voters didn't approve those funds for Park Vista, they approved it for senior housing. And my position is, well, that, that should remain as senior housing dedicated funds to give, uh, you, council and future councils the flexibility to use that as deemed necessary.
Let, let me piggyback on that. So if there is formal guidance given to attach this to Park Vista, and we're in a driverless car future, and we take parking and decide to build extra units on that, would we still be able to use these 504 funds, or would they only be for maintenance of the current facility?
Um, if, if you're expanding upon Park Vista, um, I believe that's your question? I, I would assume you would be able to use those funds. But now if this is a new senior housing facility, uh, those, the council would have to unwind your, your policy decision, if that's what council does today, um, in order to make that, those funds flexible again. But, um, you know, the, right now, again, Park Vista is the only senior housing facility in the city. I don't foresee the city building a new senior housing facility. Um, so for all intents and purposes, you know, these funds are completely available for Park Vista. We've been programming that into the budget each year. Council's approved, for instance, this year, the $60,000 approved for design of the plumbing from these 50 funds, 504 funds, so. For all intents and purposes, it is being used for Park Vista.
Is it legal for one enterprise fund to borrow from another? If, if, is this one of the concerns, that we need a fire truck one day, and we don't have money for it, that we would loot this fund?
No, yeah.
Loot is the wrong term, borrow, get it. But the same way, remember, the, the lakes had borrowed and could never pay back, sort of scenario. Is, is that the overriding concern? and could never pay back, sort of scenario. Is that the overriding concern from the board?
No, it's not. It's simply that we have to maintain a certain reserve level. And if the 504 funds are not included in the numbers, we will fall way short of our reserve. So we just want to have some confidence. Look, here's the thing. We know as long as Joe's here, that the money will flow properly. But ten years from now, if he's no longer here, or someone is in his place and decides, "Well, we need to do something new", those funds may not be used for Park Vista. And we must have them in order to achieve our goal of being financially as independent as possible.
What's the balance in the 504? And also, after you account for the plumbing?
It's about eight hundred and fifty thousand, once we account for the plumbing. But I know this is very hard to see. In this forecast, going out twenty years, the Fund 504 is in there. So those funds are reflected in there as being used towards the reserve.
This would be, just legally, since the funds aren't getting expended, some council in the future could express a different intent for these funds. If you spent them on Park Vista, then they can't be respent, but this would be like a statement of intent.
This would be a guideline, right?
Yeah, but if some future council, until the money's actually spent, it can always get reprogrammed. I don't. But, I mean, it would be a statement of intent, so that I guess Park Vista would know, at least currently, this would be the intent of the council.
Is there any way to spend the money for Park Vista in a different investment vehicle, so that the money could actually earn interest and still qualify as being spent, but not actually used for a depreciable asset?
I think it is. It's invested with the city's general fund. I mean, with our other funds?
Yeah, we do have it invested. So Treasurer Matt, he does have that invested in the city's overall pool, and we allocate out the interest.
Is there anything else that we could invest in that would qualify as the 504 that we could get a return on that wasn't an investment vehicle? I mean, to the Mayor Protem's point, is there a second story? We could build on a parking structure to get additional rent? I mean, I don't know. But is there other options to get a return on the money?
These funds would either, they would need to be used for senior housing of some type.
But there is parking. They use that parking currently as part of their benefit. And I also think that some of the parking spaces are maybe not utilized by residents' actual cars. But that's a whole nother story. But, you know, I'm just spitballing here a little bit, but have we thought about creative ways to use that money to get a return on?
Well, there's, you know, we did a study, assessment study, on Park Vista, and there's millions of dollars in capital needs. And this was going to be used towards those capital. So that's how I have it programmed on the forecast.
So if I understand, the city attorney, if we accelerated some of those capital improvement projects, we'd be spending the money, and we'd be upgrading the facility. Okay, thank you.
And I don't know whether or not, because these aren't general funds, whether they could be invested in vehicles that might have a greater return in general funds. I'd have to look at the, meet with the treasurer and look at the, I think, under our investment policy, we do restrict them, but I'd have to look at the law and see, could we, are we allowed to put these in higher-return type?
Yeah, like a pension trust.
Right. I'd have to look at that.
Yeah, one of the concerns is, though, also needs to be liquid, so we can use it and pull it out for capital needs, so.
Right. I mean, one of the points of the city's investment policy is it, it's safety, liquidity, and yield. And so if you go with something with a higher return, you probably give up some of that safety and that liquidity.
So my understanding is that the 504 funds have always been used for Park Vista, correct? Since its inception?
Since its inception in 2017, yes.
Right. So, I think you see where I'm going with this. So I really appreciate everything that you do, and I completely understand why you're asking for it. I always am loathe to handcuff future councils on things like this, because at this point, I don't, I don't see a necessity to do so. I think the ultimate decision would end up coming up to the dais anyway on how those were used, and I know we can't foresee the future, but I think we would easily continue on the path we are right now. I just don't feel comfortable making a declaration like that and handcuffing whoever might be sitting up here in the next two to four years.
And that is why it's a request.
Got you. No, but I appreciate everything you do. One and two, I'm good on. Is that one I'm a little, I'm not on?
I did just want to comment back to something the mayor mentioned. Just to clarify, we have three point five million dollars worth of projects that are identified in the city capital replacement reserves report that Joe alluded to, to be accomplished by 2031, two point three million dollars by 2027. And the city has been terrific. We had a fifty thousand dollar unexpected expense for earthquake insurance, I think it was. 504 funds paid for that. There was another expense for the water pipe review, forty thousand dollars. Those dollars came out of the 504 fund. So it is, they are coming out of them. I'm just pointing out that if we want to maintain our reserves, the 504 funds have to be in there. That's it. So I don't know how we, I'm sorry.
I just want to clarify. So I'm looking at the capital expense line for 2023, goes up to six forty-nine. Is that when we anticipate the plumbing project to start? Or what does that six forty-nine represent in 2023?
Yeah, the plumbing project, I believe, is in 2023.
Yeah, because it's about one point three million between 2023 and 2024. So, we're already baking, to your point, we're assuming that we're using the 504 funds anyway. We need the 504 funds to start that project and complete it, or no?
So Park Vista, the Senior Housing Board, has their own reserve funds?
Mm-hmm. So when would we start tapping, based on your model, when would we start tapping into, theoretically, the 504? Based on this model I'm looking at?
So we did this year, sixty thousand, and then we will, in future years, there's going to be a portion of it that we'll be using.
Do you know when? No. I'm trying to get a sense of when.
I'll have to look at that forecast.
Twenty twenty-eight?
Twenty twenty-eight is forecasted to take a, you know, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar hit. And then, a few years later, another close, you know, hundred and fifty thousand dollar hit. And by 2036, it's forecasted to have a total of twenty thousand dollars remaining. Can I ask a clarifying question as well?
Yes.
So for instance, Park Vista has its own reserve. Does the board have the authority to direct the city to use 504 funds before they use their own reserve?
No.
Okay.
No. Yeah, that's done during the strategic planning and development of the budget. We'll program funds in there. So this is just what you see in the forecast, is just the model I have. Each year, we would have to go before council and say, you know, these are the funds that we want to dedicate towards Park Vista's capital needs. And the council would have to approve that each year.
Yeah, I just, I don't, knowing that we only have nine hundred thousand available in the 504, if I'm reading this right?
Yes, we can spend it all now, and we can do that next year.
Yeah, what are we going to, what are we going to do with nine hundred thousand dollars in another facility? I mean, maybe we could offer grant funds, or accelerators for development, potentially, like we're doing the housing trust fund idea, but there's no other feasible way to use that money that I can see.
That money's currently invested as Park Vista's, their reserve is that invested as well? Like, so Park Vista's other reserve, their current reserve levels?
With the Senior Housing Board?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's...
That's also invested with the treasurer?
Yes.
Okay.
A bulk of it, not all of it, but they've transferred over a good portion of that for the city to invest in as well.
I was just thinking along the lines of what you were saying, was like, okay, well, is it invested differently, so that it's earning a better return? They should use their reserves before going to the 504, vice versa. Are they going to have same restrictions for their reserves as there are in the 504 funds, for how they can be invested?
On, well, it has to fall in, if the city's investing, it has to fall within the city's investment policy guidelines.
Okay. I think the question, you know, like, with our investment trust, right, we could be far more aggressive than with the rest of our pension funding. Is there a mechanism for this that allows us to take greater risk?
That's something that I would have to look into. I don't have the answer for that today. But if it was put into a trust, that does change some of the restrictions. But if these are funds that we're going to be programming, as the mayor said, why don't we just program it now? That kind of negates the need for...
You know, I spent some time talking to one of the original Park Vista board members, which is our city clerk's mom, Chris Sherrill, who's enlightened me about what the intent was way back in the eighties about this property. And I think using the 504 for this facility, unless I understood her incorrectly, totally fits with that. I mean, it was, the voters decided that this money, this surplus, for lack of a better term, should go to or a dedicated senior facility. We only have one senior facility in town. I would like to see us accelerate the capital improvements. And then I'm even thinking, is there something that we could do differently at that facility to make it a little bit more enjoyable? Maybe get more rent? You know, maybe instead of thirty-five percent discount, you improve some of the units there, you spend a little bit of money, and you make the units even better, and you get even more rent for a couple of them. And people are like, "If I get a fifteen to twenty percent discount off current rents, I'm really excited about that." So I just think that there's, there are some good opportunities to invest this money and potentially get a return, thinking about it a little bit creatively. So I would be in favor of just spending the money. That's how I feel.
And we can bring that up during strategic planning in the early spring, and program that into the budget.
So we don't need to decide on that tonight, then?
No.
That's what I hear you saying. Okay.
I do have one question. It's going to be a little bit of, it's, you know, it's first, that 504 is for senior living. Does senior living, like, could we use that for Jocelyn Center?
Actually, it's a senior housing.
It's a senior housing.
As opposed to...
Okay. Because if it's senior living, you know, because our Jocelyn Center needs some major work.
Does anyone fall asleep at the Joc...
I just, I'm just putting it out there as, I just, I just was curious, you know, because...
So I think what's before us is two items, it sounds like. We don't need to vote on the 504. We do need to vote on the parking rate increased by two percent, and raising rents on the, I'm sorry, moving rents to sixty-five percent of the market rate effective one-one-twenty-three. Did I get that right?
For new?
For new tenants only, yeah. Okay. Anyone move approval on that, or how?
Item three would just be policy guidance, so it doesn't require a vote.
Correct.
Yeah. So moved. Okay, thank you.
First, second?
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Paul, how long you been on Park Vista?
Sixteen years, I think.
Sixteen years.
No, I...
No, not you. You've been on, like, three years. How long have you been on, Paul? Thank you for your service. Two decades. That's amazing. We really appreciate it. Do you get free rent? You don't want to lose. I'm just kidding. All right, we moved that one up, so we're back to item twelve.
Twelve, yes.
Yeah, Mr. George.
Yes, Mayor. Item twelve is the, this item is coming back to you from your last meeting, the Main Street Imperial Highway Monument sign. Council did ask us, after reviewing options at the last meeting, to come back with a more detailed description of the budget, and also including potentially another design feature as part of the overall monument sign project. So we're here tonight to give you the details on the budget and some of the other associated design features with the sign, and hopefully, tonight, we can have a decision on this one way or the other. So I'll turn it over to Elias.
Thank you so much. So, this item is traced on your line, I'm sure. So that is going to be briefing.
Yeah, thank you. So, tonight's briefing is going to go into more detail about cost breakdown of the option that the city council chose in the last, in the last meeting, which was all-time postcard inspiration. Also, the city council requested us to look at a walkway, which we have done that. So tonight, presentation is going to be providing more detailed information, and here is Mr. Chuck Foley with Hirsch and Associates, that is going to walk us through that presentation. Chuck?
Good evening, all. So, just to recap, the all-time postcard theme was selected, and a few different requests and comments regarding that. So we went back and revised our conceptual design. One, this image here illustrates removal of the cobble and replacement of landscape. It still has decomposed granite walkway in front of the sign. Second option to this was no decomposed granite and only landscape in front of the sign. So we offer both of these exhibits for your review. The cost breakdown, we've broken it down into, you know, general site demolition, the gateway monument sign itself, and then general site construction costs. And we break that down into a line item, unit cost, square footage, linear footage of material to be removed. So with that, we also include the site electrical, irrigation, and landscape. And then we have items forty and forty-one, a construction contingency, which is generally ten percent for what-ifs. You know, if contractor gets in there and the concrete slab is twelve inches thick versus four, it covers some of those unknowns. And seven percent for a general conditions, which is essentially bonds mobilization that those costs that are inherent to a construction contract. So roughly at four-twenty-one, four-twenty-two for that sign. And just a higher level breakdown of what you just saw, just in general categorization. So four-twenty-one. Our survey doesn't extend all the way out on this greenway, so we just use some aerial, readily available aerial imaging, and we scaled it to our survey at the corner. And essentially, that red, that bold red line is suggested a pathway. And, you know, roughly, it's twenty-four seventy, two thousand four hundred and seventy feet from, say, from the corner, to make the connection over to the existing walkway. And if you were to say that you were going to build a five-foot walkway along there, the cost might look something like this, roughly four hundred and thirty, four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to get there. And we've broken this down in the same fashion. We did include a lighting allocation for this, figuring that if you were going to install that walkway, you probably would want to put some security lighting out there, or walkway lighting out there. This is solar lighting, so you wouldn't have all the costs of a new panel and panel service from Edison for that lighting. You could do that with solar lighting. And essentially, it's a five-foot walk. We assume five feet of demolition on each side for clearing and grubbing. So contractor comes in, it's roughly a fifteen-foot swath. It gets impacted to build the walkway, and then you have the walkway, and then you have a put-back. So you have some irrigation work and some sod work to put it back into maintainable condition. Another approach could be to do the walkway with decomposed granite versus concrete, so it's a slightly less expensive approach. Generally, that decomposed granite is installed with concrete mow curbs on both sides to keep it in place. It needs to be bound, just as asphalt does. So that's, it's a little bit of a lower cost to do that. It's roughly about three hundred and seventy-five thousand if you're to do that in decomposed granite. It's a trade-off with maintenance. So with a concrete walk, maintenance is fairly straightforward. With a decomposed granite walkway, it can be installed with stabilization, but you still have concern with, it's permeable. So if it rains and somebody decides to ride a bike on it, you can have tire tracks and those sorts of things that maintenance adjusts to. So, but with that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have on the budget, or these revised vignettes that just show, you know, the different approaches to that street corner.
So, quick question. So the difference between one with the walkway and one without the walkway is about fifteen thousand. Is that right? Is that what I saw up there?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So the budget for this entire program was four fifty? You see my point? Well, what was the, what was, how much did we budget slash allocate for this sign program?
So...
Four fifty.
Four fifty was...
Forty, totally. Hundred and fifty from us, the rest of it came from arts and culture, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, did that four fifty include the design of this?
Yes.
So we're already a hundred, like, eighty thousand dollars over budget? Because there's a hundred and three thousand dollars I saw in the staff report for the design. And it's gonna cost four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to build.
Yeah, the remaining.
My Boston Public School math tells me that we're about eighty thousand dollars in the hole. Already. So you need to ask eighty thousand dollars from us just to get this design done. And that does not include, do we have an estimate on what it would, it's gonna cost on maintenance every year approximately? Is it twenty thousand dollars? Is it ten thousand dollars?
I estimate the cost of, of the maintenance, including electricity, but mainly water and the general maintenance of the landscaping to be, you know, not more than a thousand dollars a month. But then the maintenance of, of the sign itself is based on how much graffiti or, or, you know, to what extent people come and, and cause damage. That is hard to estimate.
Okay. So it's conservatively twelve to twenty thousand dollars a year on maintenance.
On average, in the long run, yes, yes.
Okay.
I know we already approved our concept. I just saw the other day, El Segundo Brucco has the same concept. It's probably Joe from Boiling Point. It's a postcard concept of El Segundo. Have you guys seen the T-shirt? It's unbelievable. I mean, it's really good. And I saw that the other day, someone was wearing it. And I thought of this, cause it's a similar concept. But I just like it better. And I don't mean to offend anyone. I just think that I liked their direction this is headed, but I liked the artwork that was already done on this other one. It captured it so well. And it was the font was all similar size. It was more reminiscent of what you'd see on that postcard, you know, that you showed before with the Californian stuff.
Sure.
And there was more space for the images, if that makes sense. The, the font that was bigger or thicker, so you could see more of the images. The only thing I struggled with with this one is like, you get the sense that they're different colors. But it's hard to discern what, what it actually is. And it might be different if I'm standing, looking right at it, you know, obviously.
Sure. And, and frankly, you know, what we're showing there was a graphic representation of what it could be. We haven't developed, you know, what that actual content would be. That's, that's the color graphic on there. Presumably, the, the previous concept had the timeline of the character of El Segundo. And we might feature some of those, some of that imagery that was, you know, as part of that sign in this. But we would suspect that if this was to go forward, there would be some, yes, as to what the content of that, of that graphic is.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Sure.
Colleagues?
You know, I've, I've seen that as well, cause that, what the Boiling Point did, cause they also created one for El Segundo Unified School District, which is very, very clever and, and very I, I actually like the, the, the font that he uses better than this font. This just seems very blocky. And the other font is much more old school, El Segundo.
Sorry, I was not here last week when we talked about this. Did you guys discuss at all, I know it was discussed at the, I don't know, some meeting at some juncture of this venture, having a place to lock bicycles up in that area because of that bus stop? Cause you have people that ride their bikes. Cause if you go by there now, you have bicycles locked to like random signs on either side of that corner. Cause that's the commuter bus that goes downtown, picks up right there. And parking.
commuter express.
Yeah, commuter express. So there's.
An old fuck.
Parking impacted there. And so many people will ride their bikes to that location to get on the bus. I've always found it funny, cause the bikes are strewn about, you know, and like randomly locked to like, you know, a no parking sign or a street sweeping sign kinda thing. So I don't know if you guys talked about that. That was my one question. Second thing that I wanted to state is, you know, you drive around the Greater South Bay and most cities will have a, like, here's our sign. And it's on every major corner of our property. You know, we have one on the corner of Rosecrans and Pacific Coast Highway, Welcome to El Segundo. And it's very consistent throughout the city. You know, like City of Torrance, they have the, you know, it's cement monument sign and it's at like every exit off the four oh five. When you exit, it's like, welcome to City of Torrance. And there's like a tiny piece of cement that it's on with a light. So it's lit up at night. But it's consistent. The reason I, I refer to the consistency is, I know that this concept was like, no, it's a welcome sign. It has to be like a Instagrammable moment and something that people are gonna stop and look and say, wow. And Dr. Brand, when this conversation was had, when he was on this, on this dais, he had talked about the train bridge, one corner of Aviation and El Segundo Boulevard. Well, it's not used for trains anymore, but it could be a billboard that says, welcome to El Segundo, if, you know, if we had permission to paint it. Right? It was something, you know, I, I wanna think, I wanna say, we got asked when we were running for council, how we would beautify the entrances to El Segundo. And you wanted like Grand Avenue to be beautiful and wonderful and landscaped and all this.
Still.
Other goodness. But, uh.
I reject your past tense.
I would, I would just implore us to, whatever decision we make, I think it should be made under the concept of this sign could be replicated in other areas of our town? Or are we even concerned with being consistent throughout town? Are we concerned more with, hey, no, we're the art walk town, you know, and we're forward thinking and we're artsy. And so this is public, this is a sense of public art. And every entrance could technically have a different artistic rendition of the words, El Segundo? I don't know. I think we belabored this thing far too long. Like I, I don't, none of us are artists. I hate to break it to you. None of us went to school for art. Right? Did you? Do you have an art degree? Do you have an art degree? I don't have an art degree. Right? We just happen to be the five people that are currently elected right now while this item has come to us. And so we're gonna, you know, put our artistic touch on El Segundo. And I, I, I think that there was a subcommittee for this for a long, long time. There's two of them. I, I was on the first one. We used to meet in the Rose Room at the library. And the previous city manager felt like he needed to take this away from that subcommittee. Because it felt like it was going nowhere and it came straight to us. And so we've heard from a member of that former subcommittee, if it's even been dismantled, about how it's like, you know, there's been hours and hours and hours spent by residents of this town discussing what the sign's gonna look like. And we've essentially just pushed what they want aside. And it's like, yep, nope, this is what we're gonna do. And we're gonna do it. So I, me personally, I don't feel comfortable making any decision on this tonight, but I, I don't think a decision's gonna be made. And frankly, you guys are gonna have to decide this in five or six months. Why, I don't have a say, but you should consider the, the people that have invested their time, effort and energy into this. And ultimately, this is a sign that's gonna be here potentially for like another hundred years, like the previous one. So.
To that end, what Councilman Nichols stated, remind us of the chronology. Did we, I know we disbanded, we didn't disband that committee, but we decided to take this out. So can you give us a little background? I forget.
Sure. So that was, before my time, there was a committee. And the committee at first promoted this project and provided two thousand dollars for each artist to enter in a competition. So the committee lacked, lacked two of them. So they asked them to join together. And they did. And as it turned out, it, it wasn't a good marriage. So it didn't work out. One of the artists decided to, to walk out, basically. So the remaining artists, the, the lady was, she, she brought another person from New York. And they teamed up and they worked on this project. And then about a year or so later, a year and a half later, they split. So they, they were not getting along. And, and the city had signed a contract with both of them. And, and we, we just simply were not going anywhere. And they both, their, both their names was, was on the contract. And in other words, they were, they were both fifty fifty. And we could not really go any further. And they, they both decided to withdraw.
So how much money, how much money have we spent?
Uh, so we have.
At this juncture?
So we spent eight, we spent eight thousand dollars to, to, and give that, that for two thousand each to four artists. So that eight thousand right off the bat. And then about twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars for the first artist, or rather, the first two artists that teamed up. So that, that money was gone. And then after we were not getting anywhere, we decided to start again. And that's why we went through an RFP. And Barbara was part of the, part of the, the committee, or the panel, rather, that, that we went over the, you know, there is, there is, the, the art, the landscape architects who responded to the RFP. And we recruited Chuck. So that's the background.
So total, how much are we in?
Uh, yeah, we are about twenty, twenty-three plus eight, twenty, about, about thirty-two thousand. Yeah, roughly. Not, not including his, his contract.
So how, how much is that included?
So including his, his contract, we, we've, his contract is what, for about I, I don't remember how much.
I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, yeah.
Yeah, it is on the staff report. So basically.
Staff report, it's one hundred and three thousand.
So we're into this a hundred and thirty.
Well, hundred three thousand includes the, the twenty, the thirty-two thousand that I, I talked about. So if I, hundred three thousand minus thirty.
You said eighty, you said eighty grand.
Yeah, eighty thousand.
Design or thirty, or Lancer?
Right, roughly.
I, I think we have a pretty good idea of why the old sign hung in so long. Because no one in their right mind would wanna take on replacing a sign. And I, I joked last time that no matter what we choose, it's going to be desperately wrong. And we'll be second guessed. I suspect this was an agenda item actually planted by George Hoops as a trap for us to fall into eventually.
Oh, no.
God bless him. I, if, there's a couple, one thing I may have misconstrued is the cost of the trail. Fifteen thousand dollars additional or another four hundred thousand dollars? Another, another half million dollars.
Right.
I, I, I don't think we're gonna do that. Like, I think, I like the trail concept. I don't think it's probably the right time to invest four to a thousand dollars in it. I, I don't know anything about art or signs. I, I do know that the more foliage we put in front of this, the more trash can get in it. So I, I would favor, you know, more of the, the granite, that option, the more granite option, no matter what we do. I think the idea of adding a bike thing probably comes from a different line item of, of infrastructure. But I do like having a bike rack, having lugged mine on that bus a gajillion times. But I, I would be happy for us to make a, a decision tonight on actually breaking ground, replacing a sign.
Yeah, one, one way to look at it. I mean, it is, it seems almost unfathomable that it's a half a million dollars for a sign. And, but I'll say what I said earlier. A, a sign is a very important placeholder for any organization. And it is a lot of money, but it's gonna get a lot of impressions, a lot of impressions. And if we do this sign right, it's going to set the stage for entry into our city. So I think we invest the money. We've been such good fiscal stewards otherwise up here on so many matters. This is important. And we have the arts and culture funds to use. And this qualifies as an arts and culture project. So we're using this as the intent of those. Every project that comes up here for arts and culture, which is why this, that was not in favor of the arts and culture one percent, we're gonna have this issue. Every time that we're making a decision on art, we're gonna have an issue. And this is one example. So, but having said that, we gotta move forward here. I mean, it's been a long time. I agree with Mayor Protem that if we want it to be Instagram worthy or whatever, photo worthy, we need a place for people to stand to at a good vantage point where they could do a selfie. And if there's greenery there, you can't necessarily do that. And if we look at Imperial the way it is now, it looks terrible. I know we're working with Lawa to get that resolved. But that vegetation does nothing but collect trash on Imperial. And I, I fear the same thing would hold true. I actually love the idea of the, it's about a mile, it sounds like, almost a mile on that path if you go up and down, round trip. I don't think we have the funds now, but I think it would be a really cool use down the line if we could allocate the funds and, and the public buys into it. I think it would be a really cool way to connect. I think you brought that one up along that unused, I mean, it's, I would say underutilized parkway. But I would be in favor of going in this direction, getting this project done. But just taking a little bit different approach with the art itself. And I know you're gonna come back with some iterations there. That'd be my thought. Crickets.
I'll, I'll, I'll move approval on this, less the bike path and with the more decomposed granite. It, it does kill me to spend half a million on this thing. But I do also understand that at some point in time, we gotta do all these projects and we gotta start moving forward on some things. So I would, I'll second that.
I'm just.
Further thoughts, Carol, yeah?
My, my only thought is, you know, I, I look at, you know, the point, and I look at the Manhattan Beach, the new, the Manhattan Beach Mall and the new, the area that they've activated for residents. And we're paying four hundred and something thousand dollars for for like decomposed granite. Like, there's nothing that, like, other than the sign, it's, it's like, so they took out the granite, they stick in some foliage there. It's like, I don't, it just seems, it seems like we're paying a lot of money for, for something that I don't feel is very attractive. And it's, I, I, I'm not gonna approve it.
Good. Thank you, Councilor Prost. Any further discussion? We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Three? Three, two, Madam Clerk.
I thought I'd share with you.
These two or no?
The corner of Pacific Coast Highway and Imperial. Pretty sure more cars drive past that sign than anybody else. And that's what it looks like. Pretty, pretty impressive.
Right.
Welcome to El Segundo, right?
Do you notice it?
Yeah, no, you don't.
You don't notice it?
Every other city in the world. Instagram.
We'll go, we'll go right after that sign next. Hold on to your hats for twenty twenty-nine.
Mr. Foley, thank you. I know it's been circuitous path here. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your.
Do we have an estimated, by the way, do we have an estimated timeline?
Yeah. It would take a few months to finish the design. And after that, we're gonna be advertising for construction, come back to city council and get authorization for.
Yes. And I, I think one of the questions is the arts council and how involved they'll be in the actual content? Or is that, will that be a council?
Yeah. So my, my suggestion is that we keep the art and cultural committee involved in the process and, and come back to them with their, with their briefing, let them know what's going on before we come to city council and request authorization for advertising the project for construction. We can do that.
I, I would recommend we have a, a timeline for that though. So it doesn't, cause otherwise it'd been.
Right.
We could be talking about several competitive, compelling designs.
Sure. So.
When, when was that old sign built? Was it really a hundred years old? Fifties, right? Looked like fifties.
About eighty, eight, yeah, about eighty.
Do we know what that cost to build? No, I'm, I'm, I'm serious about in today's dollars, what that sign would have cost to build.
Uh, I.
It would be interesting to know because I, I'm sure that wasn't cheap either.
Where did we move all those, you know, the Lions Club, Kiwanis Club, Rotary Club?
They're at the yard, aren't they? At the city yard?
Well, no, I mean, but are we gonna put up a new sign with those things on them? So when people are welcoming to town, they know what clubs are here?
No.
The vote is concluded. You may not like it, but the vote is done. All right, we're moving on to item thirteen. No, it's, I'm just kidding. One year extension of joint use agreements with El Segundo Unified School District. Mr. George, who will present on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, recreation director, Ally Mancini, will present this item. If you recall, this item also came before you, I believe back in August, in lengthy discussion. We subsequently had numerous meetings with the school superintendent and her staff on what you see before you this evening, which is a request to extend the original agreement for one year. Keeping the, the, the agreement as it is right now and come back in a year with the, with more, a more detailed description of an. Keeping the, the, the agreement as it is right now and come back in a year with the de, with more, a more detailed, uh, description of an extended agreement. So, I'll turn it over to Ally for a quick presentation on kind of some of the features we'll be looking at.
Good evening, Mayor Boils and members of the City Council. Tonight, the City Council will consider a one-year extension of two agreements with the El Segundo Unified School District, including the joint use agreement for public recreation facilities and the media, studio, and equipment joint use agreement. The city and the school di- district have worked together in partnership since nineteen ninety to support the residents of El Segundo through cash contributions and in-kind services via shared use agreements of district-owned and city-owned facilities and amenities. The current agreements expire in September twenty-twenty-two. At the council meeting in August, staff proposed extending the amended agreements for a term of ten years. The City Council discussed the agreements and expressed a desire to have a shorter term for the agreement based on the changing needs of the city and the school district. A shorter-term agreement would allow city staff and district staff more opportunities to amend the agreement to ensure that the agreement continues meeting the needs of both parties. Council al- also directed staff to return with more details about the financial support that has been provided to the school district for the past fifteen years, and to include a list of in-kind fina- financial contributions from the school district to the city. The City Council then discussed extending the agreements for a term of one year to give staff time to prepare a more detailed analysis of the joint use. And that concludes my staff report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions Council might have.
I just have one question. Um, at the joint, uh, meeting we had with Parks and Rec, um, there was a discussion that came up about a priority use agreement that was supposed to be, I guess, handed out, like, did we found that priority use agreement? Because it was supposed to be, it was separate from the, the joint use, right? It was a, it was, the way it was talked about, it was an extra agreement. Did, is that, does that exist?
Um, staff have not been able to locate any such document, and we, nor have we received anything from the school district.
Yeah, I, I did follow up on that, Councilmember, and requested a copy of that, because I had not heard of a, of a priority agreement, and have not received anything at this point.
Okay, so that, to our knowledge, is, it's, that doesn't exist, that we know about, just the joint use agreement exists?
That's correct.
Okay, got you, thank you.
Any further questions?
I mean, is, is, the tennis courts are the elephant in the room. I, I don't know about you guys, I get scathing messages and emails every day about the tennis court. Do, do we, do we understand what we are going to do about the high school getting rid of their tennis court but keeping a varsity sport? I mean, because youth, youth tennis wants the courts.
Right.
Residents want the courts, and the high school wants the courts, is that covered in this? Do we have a, a plan for how we're gonna wedge them in?
We are actually meeting with, uh, the superintendent on Thursday to discuss that. But at this point, no, a, a decision has not, well, a recommendation has not been made, but we will be meeting with her, and it still needs to be finalized.
I mean, we don't want to punish the kids, the high school kids, right? We don't want to punish the younger kids who are also using it, we don't want to punish the residents who own the courts.
Right.
Um, I mean, if we ratify this for a year, uh, is that, that facility's not addressed, and there's no record of them having any sort of that usage agreement for it?
Correct, there is, that's the difficulty, there is no record for, um, evidently, there was an underst- an understanding, I guess, at some point that the city would support the school once those courts were demolished, which is gonna happen, by the way, next month. But we have not seen any, any documentation of that.
I'd like to clarify that, we've, we've been told there was some understanding reached, but it's nowhere in writing, and it's, I mean, there's no details of it. I'm not saying some discussion didn't happen somewhere, but for an agreement to be binding with the city, it needs to be in writing, and clerk o- clerk's office would have it. The, as I understand it, the agreement, as it's written, um, with regard to city facilities, city program have, city programming will have priority, this is the way they work now, over school district program. So, it just depends on, I mean, that's the circumstance. So, if, unless the council directs otherwise with regard to tennis courts, city programming will have, um, priority over the school district's programming.
And, and just to add a point, um, to Mr. Hensley, that Mr. Hensley mentioned, so the joint use agreement is very general. It mentions all of our facilities, and it doesn't, um, provide specific information on when the district is going to use those facilities. Um, and moving forward, I think that's something we need to consider. Uh, in the Wiseburn Aquatic Center, it's very specific about the times that the, that the district will utilize the pool. And I think it's from three to six. Um, but it's very specific, and they have to, if they want to amend that, then we actually put that into the agreement. And so, I know Dr. Moore had some concerns about, you know, how much more detail that would be, but I think moving forward that it's, it's very clear that we need to have those agreements in place as part of either, you know, an, an extended agreement or an amendment each year. Um, but, but I think that's the difficulty, is we don't have anything in place that specifies when and where those facilities can be used outside of the aquatic facility.
I, I don't think we're necessarily advocating, you know, tying people's hands with a, a tons of guidance, but there's some things that, that we do joint use for which are very predictive, right? We know when Little League plays, we know when soccer plays, we know when softball plays, all these things. When there is an externality like this, like an entire varsity sport moving onto city facilities, that's, that's a move probably we'll have to dial in, in the same way, like, look, when, when, uh, we rebuild a plunge, right? That's gonna be an in-demand facility as well, so, uh, it may be worth looking forward to that, but.
Now, for clarification, though, ha- hasn't the tennis, the varsity tennis been playing at the Parks and Recs for a while now?
So, I think that's where there's some confusion, and frankly, I think there might have been some confusion with administration, is they have been using the courts. And so, our understanding was it was gonna be the same use, you know, that, that, that they've been using, um, which is, I think, a couple days a week for a couple hours here and there. Um, but that, this additional use is significant. I mean, it would, it would disrupt the programs, the city's programs that are there. So, I think that's the issue, is yes, they've been on the courts, but the amount of time that they need the courts is going to increase significantly.
Sorry. Um, is it just a fall sport at the high school? Do we know what tennis is, or is, is tennis fall and spring? Is it two different things?
Well, I, I, I think that's where I was thinking with the, of extension on this. You guys are gonna dig into this next year.
Yes.
Like, really dig into it, because, Chris, to your statement, I think your statement at one point in time was totally true. It was very predictive when sports were played, but as we know now, sports are played year-round. Like, yeah, Little League would love to have that field right now, right? And there'd be, there's baseball users that would love to be renting out Brett Field right now, over and over and over again. And, and we have to, I think we need to be careful with the, the concept of priority, and what field space gets used, and how. And, and when you guys look at this and look at the joint use, I think it would be very helpful to zoom out and look at every piece of grass in the city and say, okay, school district, if you're truly our partner, then here's everyone we're trying to satisfy. Who are you trying to satisfy? How can we truly partner on satisfying all these user groups at the same time? You know, because I, I was thinking, somebody, I was talking to somebody, and they're like, so if the high school decided to tear out their football field, could they just go use campus whenever they wanted? And I was like, well, yeah, it's not the same, it, it, it's not the same concept, but it is the same concept, right? And so, I just, I think we need to be careful with that. Uh, I, it is not my desire, I can't speak for my fellow councilmembers, but it's not my desire to, to see the high school lose a sport that is popular, right? I think that we should do everything within our power to make sure that that sport can continue on within reason, right? But I think we, we could also use some help there from the school district. You know, I was thinking, like, gosh, like, could they put tennis nets up on the basketball courts at Richmond Street? Could they put temporary tennis nets up on the blacktop at Richmond to practice there? Like, like, how can we make this work, you know, so that we can get through? And so, I would just implore staff to do whatever you can in, in the immediate, when their courts do get removed, to help these kids through, because you can imagine, if you're a childless senior going into their senior year, and, and then the rug gets pulled out from underneath you. I mean, that, just the, the time, effort, and energy and passion that that child would have, like, I would never want to stroke the pen that kills that. And so, uh, I think we do whatever we can in this coming year. Uh, but we talk to the school about, like, well, how are we going to deal with this, you know, moving forward across the board?
Yeah, can you clarify a little bit?
It would disrupt, uh, uh, the tennis, uh, the tennis coach that's out there a couple of days a week, and I think pickleball as well. So, the courts are completely programmed, and they're programmed through, they're actually advertised, uh, you know, the programs have already been advertised as programmed through December. Uh, those lessons and things are already in our guide, not to say we couldn't make changes, but.
Oh, the Rec Park Guide, Perkings Lessons, got it.
Right.
That's Sergio, right? Sergio's.
That's correct, Serge, mhm.
And, but I, I, I feel like three to six, is that a popular time outside of school? I mean, outside of a school use, I would think six on, what, what's the prime time?
Yeah, so it's really, he, he does his lessons, uh, during that time after school, and then pickleball also starts, I think around five o'clock. Um, and so, they would be bumped back.
Yeah, five makes sense, but I mean, I mean, people are mostly adults, right, playing pickleball, mostly?
Right.
Get out of work at five.
It's the youth lessons, the.
Is there an opportunity to give them, like, three to five, and, I, I don't know, just, to Councilman Nichols' point, it would be, I, I think we have, we have, I know we have much bigger conversations to have with the school district about this joint year used and getting specificity and defining which, which party's doing what for each other. In the meantime, uh, we, it would really be great to accommodate these, these kids in the high school team.
Yeah, Darryl and I are gonna, gonna talk a little bit more about this, and that was one of my, um, thoughts as well, is talking with Serge, and maybe seeing, you know, what, what options we have, or what we can do to accommodate maybe, maybe not all the time, but maybe a significant portion. I don't think anybody wants to see the students, um, displaced, um, but we also want to be sensitive to the, the programs that are out there, but.
Yeah, Co- Coach Sergio's, tho- those are elementary school students.
They are.
Students too.
They are, they're kids.
That's oftentimes a part of their childcare plan, to be frank.
Right, they have lessons out there, but, um, I'm hopeful we can, you know, maybe meet a compromise somewhere in the middle. Um, you know, because we, we wanna make everybody happy, they're all our residents and students, so.
In the end, sometimes it's gonna be better than no time.
That's what I'm hoping for.
Okay.
That's what I'm hoping for.
Okay, so we have two items before us, we're approving a one-year extension, in both cases, joint use agreement, but it, it talks about attachment B is a studio and equipment, and attachment A is related to the public recreation facilities.
Correct.
Any further discussion? You guys could, anyone would like to move approval on either or both items?
So moved.
On both?
Okay, thank you.
Nichols second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've got everything, right? Madam Clerk, on the agenda, we're mov- we're on to reports. Councilmember Drew.
Nothing for me this evening.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Nichol.
I'd like to invite everyone to, uh, the Fair on Main Street, formerly known as Richmond Street Fair. Last year, with, um, outdoor dining and COVID, uh, outdoor dining protocol is still on Richmond Street, Quanis Club, uh, pivoted and moved the, the fair to Main Street, and it was a huge success. Uh, we did like a survey, a poll survey day of, asking not only the vendors, but also the guests, you know, do you like it better where it was on Richmond, do you like it on Main Street? And they felt like Richmond Street truly activated town and was, uh, just a much better program, which then forced, didn't force Quanis, but Quanis made the decision to change the name from the Richmond Street Fair to the Fair on Main Street. And so, it is this Saturday, come down, we have more vendors than we've ever had signed up before. Um, it's just a wonderful day for, you know, for this town, for this community, for the families. It's everything that is the fabric of this town, are these, uh, these events that get put on by the clubs. And it's a fundraising event, so, uh, Mayor, you're gonna help and volunteer at the Beer Garden, correct?
Potentially. I usually do, whether I'm asked or not, yeah.
Uh, El Segundo Brewing Company is kind enough this year to be the primary sponsor of the Beer Garden. Um, Rob and his team at the brewing company have been just beyond generous to this town, giving back to the community that, uh, you know, he grew up in. So, I want to thank, thank him for that, and I want to invite all of you down.
And a little plug for Barry Gribbin, he's been working his tail off on that event, done a great job. Thank you, Councilman Nichol. All right, Councilmember Purstuck.
Um, I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Councillor, Mayor Protem Pimentel.
Uh, we have, County Sanitation District Board meetings are tomorrow. Uh, an interesting thing from transportation at the last one is that, uh, they have foreclosed any expansion of the seven-ten freeway, which is a long-running, one of those projects that never came to, to anything. The idea, because that, that takes such heavy truck traffic up to the ten and the four-oh-five, if that is not gonna be expanded, uh, and it's not, the EPA, EPA's not gonna allow, because the air quality's so poor, the moves there will largely be to efficiency and electrification and things like that. But what the effect of that is, is the truck traffic from the port is so heavy, when it can't go on the seven-ten, it, it, it's going to go somewhere. And, and that, we will see effects of that on the one-ten, uh, which will ripple traffic to the four-oh-five. So, I think it's something that we should be mindful of with our residents as people start coming fully back to work, that as those containers start coming off, uh, it's something that we're keeping an eye on, and it's a region. Um, it's somewhat delicate politically, because it, it has two coalitions of government, uh, that have complementary interests, but not always, uh, perfectly aligned interests in the gateway cities of the seven-ten, uh, and the South Bay cities at the one-ten. So, that's something that I think is, is, we talk about impact to our residents that are externalities, as those trucks get pushed off the seven-ten onto the one-ten. Uh, I, I think we will see truck traffic here, and, and it will certainly play into the way they look at expanding the four-oh-five corridor, which you probably get a bunch of spammy emails about, but, uh, something that, that is a twenty, from now until twenty forty-five project. So, the world of infrastructure, uh, right around the corner. Uh, but that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to thank staff, we had a great state of the city, I think, I think Marcia told us, she'd say six hundred registrations.
Yes, she did.
That's incredible, great job, team. I think we had five hundred or so show up. I was a little skeptical, because not that many people are back to work. I mean, Mattel is one-day-a-week right now, folks, Mattel. Um, and the restaurants are feeling it, by the way, because I heard from at least one restaurant owner at that event that they are feeling it for their lunch business, big time. Anyway, a little bit of aside, but it was a great event, um, and I want to thank staff, Barbara, your team did a great job, Christina Ravelas, Kirsten Bergman, Darnell Jenkins, Stevie, Rob, Edio, uh, who'd that, Messiah, Marcia Hansen, of course, at the chamber, my colleagues did great videos, it's great. Uh, except for the food, we're working on that for next year. We a little bit of missed that. The food was good, we just had a little bit of shortfall, um, and so, we, we did a great debrief today about what worked and what didn't work, and, and all in all, it was a great event, so thank you. All right, um, City Attorney.
Nothing, thank you, Mayor.
City Manager.
Yes, just one item, Mayor, I wanted to let you, the council, know that our Community Development Director, Michael Allen, was, uh, contacted today by Laowa, LA World Airports, as you know, about, uh, them rolling out this, uh, the RSI project, um, the Residential Sound Installation Project. So, they're starting to reach out now to eligible homeowners on this program. And, um, Michael has been designated as our staff liaison, so he's working with them directly. And I'm gonna get a memo to you about that, uh, this week, and then we're gonna invite them to a council meeting next month to do a presentation. So, I just, if you get calls on that, just wanted to give you the heads up. That's it, thank you.
That's great, thank you very much. Uh, before we head out, sadly, I've got, uh, a memorial to read, we're gonna adjourn in the honor of Scott S. Nichol. Mr. Nichol was born September fifth, nineteen fifty, nine fifty, nineteen fifty-five, excuse me, passed away September sixth, twenty twenty-two, he was sixty-seven years old. Scott was preceded in death by his father, Don C. Nichol, mother Beverly Nichol, and brother Don B. Nichol. Scott is survived by his three children and six grandchildren. Daughter Christina Nichol Biggerstaff, who lives here in town. Steven Biggerstaff is a husband, children Breeden and Reese Biggerstaff, son Scott F. Nichol, Kimberly Nichol, his wife, children Scotty and Sullivan Nichol, and son Robert J. Nichol and his wife Jennifer Nichol. Children Gunner and Bella Nichol. He is also survived by his sister Karen Odom, John Odom's hus- uh, John Odom is a husband, brother Doug, and brother Doug Nichol. Scott lived life in Los Angeles, where he spent his sixty-seven years of life, growing up in Culver City and graduating in nineteen seventy-three. He was married July ninth, nineteen seventy-seven, to Anne Marie Walent. Scott became a father on October twenty-ninth, nineteen seventy-eight, when he and his wife welcomed Christina Marie Nichol into the world. He had two sons in nineteen eighty and nineteen eighty-two, Scott and Robert. Scott and Anne Marie raised their kids in their home, home in Hawthorne. This is the home Scott lived in for the remainder of his life, his home. Scott left his imprint on the lives of many in. Scott left his imprint on the lives of many in what will be remembered as a fun, loving, thrill-seeking, generous soul. And as I told, Councilman Nichol, I wish I had known him, I really enjoyed being at the service and our condolences are with you and your family, Councilman Nichol. Thank you, we're adjourned.